Bingo.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of October 11th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
I left, sorry, Stephen. Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Mayor Heikle?
I am here. Would you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I have an announcement to make. Better get a mic. I have one. I have an announcement to make right here at the beginning. Items 27 and the bid documents have been withdrawn by the applicant, rendering item 29 as mute, so we won't be hearing those. Next item is consideration session minutes of June 21, 2022, and the City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee minutes of June 23, 2022. I need a motion to approve the minutes? I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The minutes were... The minutes were approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item two, a resolution commemorating the inauguration of the City of Norman International Festival. I need a motion to adopt the resolution. I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The items approved unanimously.
I'm going to read the resolution, and I have the resolution here. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman commemorating the inauguration of the City of Norman International Festival. Whereas the City of Norman is known as the City of Festivals and the City of Norman welcomes the addition of the first City of Norman International Festival, and whereas the vibrancy of a community is felt through the diversity of residents, business owners, nonprofits, and visitors, and whereas this event will bring such groups together in the spirit of celebrating cultural differences in a unity-focused approach, and whereas the City of Norman's Diversity and Equity Office has coordinated this festival, it is a culmination of collaboration, support, and shared responsibility by all city leaders and residents to create a space which celebrates a global community this day and throughout, and whereas with a partner such as the University of Oklahoma that attracts top students, faculty, and guests of global backgrounds, the City of Norman is proud of its diversity as shared in the recent U.S. Census results showing one in four residents are of diverse origins. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the City of Norman, Oklahoma does hereby announce the inaugural 2022 City of Norman International Festival to be held on October 23rd, 2022. Ms. Sadie Oriana, would you please come forward for this resolution, please?
Honorable Mayor and council members in the audience present, on behalf of the international community of Norman, thank you. Thank you for acknowledging the diversity of us Normanites. Author Maya Angelou said, "We all should know that diversity makes for a rich tapestry, and we must understand that all threads of the tapestry are equal in value no matter what their color." Norman, being a college town, is conformed of people of many different backgrounds who are also contributing to the well-being of this city and across the state of Oklahoma. Today, I invited a few of my international friends who are also Normanites to help me share a sample of the rich tapestry we refer to. I will first mention their country of origin, their name, their title, and a few of their highlights. India, Akash Patel, President-elect, American consul on the teaching of foreign languages. He speaks six different languages fluently and has served in the United Nations and has connected teachers with more than 150 countries around the world. Iran, Faraz Nassar. She holds a Master's in Public Administration. She's the daughter of one of the Farzane brothers. You may know the owners of Home Creations. And she's also a member of the Friends of the Oklahoma Historical Society Multicultural Board for Oklahoma. Mexican-American, Robert Reese. He's the Executive Director for External Affairs at Oklahoma City Community College. He's also one of the founders of multiple art initiatives here in Norman. From Venezuela, we have Masiel Cruz Gonzalez. She's Reinita Hispana de Oklahoma 2022-2023. She's a nine-year-old attending Madison Elementary, and she's also fluently bilingual in English and Spanish. From Guatemala, Reverend Otto Orellana. He's the co-founder and lead pastor at Iglesia Pueblo de Dios. Myself, I was born and raised in Guatemala. At age 16, I continued my studies in New York, then California, and finally Norman, Oklahoma since 2004. Along with my husband, we co-founded the Hispanic Church previously mentioned. I am considered among the top 100 entrepreneurs around the nation from the Hispanic Scholar Foundation. I am an OU alumna of several leadership programs. I am also a member of the Leadership Oklahoma Class Number 35 and the Multicultural Officer for the Oklahoma Historical Society, the estate agency designated to collect, preserve, and share the history of the culture of Oklahoma and its people. But we also have allies and partners like Marles Bradley. She's from the United States, Normanite, and she's the representative of passports, Norman's International and Sister City Organization, which promotes and encourages the advancement of international relations between Norman and communities in other parts of the world. Therefore, when we refer to the International Festival, this is just a sample of what we refer to. It goes beyond the arts and the food. I would like to cordially invite the audience to join and celebrate our diversity on Sunday, October 23rd, at 2:00 p.m. at Reeves Park, and we appreciate the hard work of our own City of Norman's Chief Diversity Officer, Cynthia Allen. Thank you, Norman. Thank you for the welcoming spirit and for your continued support. That is greatly appreciated.
Thank you all very much. Item number three, a resolution commending and extending recognition to the students and faculty at Norman North High School for the 25th year anniversary of Norman North High School. I need a motion to adopt the resolution? I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The resolution is adopted unanimously.
All right. Wonderful. Let me read that resolution. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman commending and extending recognition to the students and faculty at Norman North High School on the 25th anniversary of Norman North High School. Whereas Norman North High School was established on August 21st, 1997, at 1809 Stubbeeman Avenue, on the grounds where Longfellow Middle School was built in 1972. And whereas Norman North High School was selected as a 2008 No Child Left Behind Blue Ribbon School based on their overall academic excellence and progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. And whereas in 2009, Norman North High School was part of the 2009 Student Exchange Program with Israel and hosted 24 Israeli students for two weeks, and when they left, Norman North students traveled with them back to Israel to learn about their culture. And whereas Norman North High School Athletic Program has won 30 national championships with 22 state runner-up, and 162 students received the National Merit Scholarships. And whereas in nine years, Norman North High School students raised $2,592,726 through Spud, Students Performing Unselfish Deeds that is used to support local individuals in need and social service organizations. And whereas since 1997, there have been 11,082 students graduate from Norman North High School. Notable graduates include Trey Young, who plays for the Atlanta Hawks, Jordan Evans, who plays for the Cincinnati Bengals, Josh Bonzie, actor and comedian, Owen Joyner, actor, and Maggie McClure, singer-songwriter actress. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the Council of the City of Norman, on behalf of the entire citizenry of Norman, commands and extends appreciation to the students and faculty of Norman North High School for the 25th year anniversary of Norman North High School. Is Principal Garrett here? Yes. That is odd to read that because my daughter was in the first class that went there, and I don't remember. Just as time has gone by. All right. Item number four, a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of October 2022 is code compliance month. I need an adoption to adopt or reject the resolution? I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The proclamation was adopted unanimously.
Wonderful. I will read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of October 2022 is code compliance month in the City of Norman. Whereas code compliance officers provide for the safety and welfare of the citizens in the City of Norman through the enforcement of local codes and ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and life safety. And whereas code compliance officers often have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for the residents and businesses. And whereas the City of Norman, code compliance officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and the application of housing, zoning, nuisance codes, and ordinances. And whereas there is a total of 90 years' worth of code experience in the City of Norman Code Compliance Division, and four of the city's officers have been named Code Enforcement Officer of the Year: Janita Hatley in 2004, Kelvin Winter in 2006, Barbara Burlingame in 2008, and Joe Sheer in 2014. Excuse me. Whereas the City of Norman Code Compliance Officers have been very active in the Oklahoma Code Enforcement Association and have held numerous offices in the state organization since its inception in 1994. And whereas code enforcement officers have a highly visible role in the communities they serve and regularly interact with a variety of state officials, county officials, first responders, legislative boards, commissions, agencies, and bodies. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby declare the month of October 2022 as code compliance month in the City of Norman. Kelvin Winter? Or where are you, Kelvin?
I would like to say thank you, Mayor, and also council members. We kind of get criticism on both sides of the issue, so we don't get the recognition all that often. But you know, we have a great team. They work hard. We do about 10,000 code cases a year. That's four inspectors and a supervisor, so it stays busy. And we also lost one of our team members at the beginning of the year, and so you know, that hurt a lot too. But you know, we're going on, and anyway, we just really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Consent docket. This item is placed in the agenda. So, oh, I hit it again. I always miss that. Council announcements. Would you like to say something, councilmember?
So I have a lot to say tonight, so bear with me. I wrote this down. First, I'd like to start my council announcements by reminding everyone what the First Amendment of our Constitution says. The First Amendment provides that Congress make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting its free exercise. It also protects freedom of speech, the press, assembly, and the right to petition the government for a redress of grievances, or in other words, peacefully protest. Next, I would like to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day yesterday, as well as LGBTQ+ History Month in October. And in honor of that, I would like to read an excerpt that I found from Latter Gay Stories, and it reads as follows. Two-spirit Native Americans are honored and remembered this Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 10th of 2022. Indigenous Peoples' Day is an alternative to Columbus Day, which celebrates the arrival of European explorer Christopher Columbus to the American continents. On October 12th of 1492, Native American tribes through the North, Central, and South Americas has traditionally recognized two-spirit people of non-binary or mixed gender. They were special people within the cultures. Two-spirit people were not only socially accepted in Native American cultures, but also appear as sacrificed figures in Native American rituals and mythology. Before Columbus arrived, most Native American societies valued people who blended female and male roles or characteristics. The Native Americans had languages and words for third and sometimes even fourth genders. Two-spirit is a Native American term for the alternative genders because one body houses both feminine and masculine spirits. Today, we celebrate the Indigenous peoples and their beautiful and eternal contributions to bridging the histories of our queer experiences. Last, as you can imagine, I've received a lot of comments and feedback over the last week about the statements that have been made in multiple private events, and I want everyone to know that I hear you and I share your concern and frustration. But I also want to make sure everyone knows that I feel very strongly that it's important that my actions match my words. I feel that it is one of the primary responsibilities of our job on council to use this special and important platform we have that our voters have entrusted us with to speak for those who don't have a voice, who don't have their own platform, and who don't have the privilege of walking into a private event, paying $30, and saying whatever is on their mind. So what I'm going to do tonight is use this platform to talk about someone like that, and his name is Richard Anderson. Many of you may know him. He created a GoFundMe recently to raise money to get transportation to see his son play in a band in a football game. He hadn't been out of this city in 15 years. The wonderful people in our community donated money, and he was able to get a ride. Cost him $400. Unfortunately, prior to the game starting, he was heading to the restroom, and a ramp that he was going up had a sudden drop-off without any caution or notification, causing him to take a tumble and land on his shoulder. The ride service he used, not sure what to do, ends up taking his wheelchair back to Norman while Ricky was in the hospital in Yukon. The wheelchair is Ricky's legs, and nobody took the time to ask Ricky what he wanted or needed. The hospital in Yukon did an X-ray and let Ricky go, stating that he just had bruising. They gave him prescriptions of muscle relaxers and steroids and released him that later I had to go fill and pay for because his insurance didn't cover. His neighbor spent three hours looking for a ride for Ricky to get back home, and Jeff with Progressive Independence ended up having to pay an additional $200 to get Ricky back home. Once he was home, he was transferred from a manual chair to his motorized chair and left in his living room with no follow-up care instructions. The neighbor who found the ride service also had to call his 22-year-old personal care assistant and ask her to arrive at 2:30 in the morning when the ride service arrived and figure out how to get him into bed on her own while he is unable to lift his right arm. Fortunately, his PCA is also my daughter, and I was able to go assist her. Over the next two days, we watched as Ricky's collarbone continued to protrude and swell and the bruising spread. Ricky complained of pain, but just chalked it up to the fall, and yesterday he decided he needed to be checked out again. Due to the lack of on-demand transportation services that our city and state do not have, and the fact that an ambulance would require Ricky to lay down, which caused more pain, he had to use his wheelchair to get to the hospital. I met him there with my daughter, and we sat with Ricky for over five hours in the waiting room after telling them we were afraid his bone was really broken and that he had internal bleeding. Once we made it back to an exam room, our suspicions were confirmed, and he did have a broken collarbone, and it did cause blood vessels to rupture. Fortunately, the CT scan showed bleeding had stopped at this point, but is what caused all of the blood to continue to drain down his chest and cause all of the additional bruising. They gave Ricky a shot of morphine for the pain. I then asked the ER doctor at that point if someone was going to be able to give Ricky a ride back home, since they had given him a shot of morphine, and it was raining outside. This was last night, about 12 o'clock midnight. She told me that she would go check. Norman Regional does have their own transportation van that does have a wheelchair lift on it, but it only operates during the day. And a nurse came back in the room later and told us that they had reached out to Metta Ride, but they were unable to come back tonight because they were booked and to call a Lyft or an Uber. Well, if you're familiar with what we've been talking about in CPTC, which is Community Planning and Transportation, over the last 18 months that I've been there, we've addressed that Ubers and Lifts in our state don't have any wheelchair lifts in them or the ability to give rides to people in wheelchairs. So literally, Ricky's only option to go home last night was to drive himself in his wheelchair in the rain on morphine, as I followed him with my bright lights on, hoping he didn't hit a pothole hidden by water. Just as we don't plan every moment of our lives 24 hours in advance, nor can we plan an accident, neither can a person in a wheelchair. We can and must do better as a city and as a healthcare facility operated by our city to not only allow this poor treatment of people with disabilities, or to no longer allow this poor treatment of people with disabilities. I will leave you with this quote. The disability community is the largest minority group, and also the only minority group that any of us could join at any moment. Thank you.
Yes. I also had on my list today to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day from yesterday, and I would encourage everybody to go online. There is a kind of a crowdsourced document that showcases all of the indigenous land around the world, and it's where you can look to see what indigenous people and tribes are on the land that you currently sit on. So that's a great resource, so I would encourage everyone to go check out which tribes are here and where you live. Second, I also had on my list to recognize LGBTQ+ History Month, but as Councilmember Studley so kindly addressed that as well. But I want to make note of two benefit nights that are happening at the garage. Right now, tonight, from 6:00 to 9:00, Norman Pride is having a benefit at the garage. And then next week, Norman Caravans is also having a benefit on the 18th. So go ahead and support both of those local endeavors that do wonderful things for our community. Also want to highlight that this weekend, October 15th, is Big Trash Day for most of Ward 2. So I know we had one last week, and so this is kind of a favorite time of the year. We do this twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall. So go ahead and put out all of your unwanted large items onto the curb, and they will be picked up. I wanted to also highlight that I'm very excited that the International Festival is starting and the wonderful presentation that we had earlier. So if you didn't catch that, that event is going on Sunday, October 23rd, at Reeves Park, and it sounds like it's going to be a wonderful event. Another thing is, on September 13th of 2022, we put into effect or signed the resolution ordinance to have our new ward boundary. So in two days, October 13th, those new ward boundaries will go into effect, so I encourage everyone to go and check out if you've been positioned into a new ward or if you're changing wards, you know, as we think about upcoming elections and who you need to reach out for for different challenges and things that are going on within our community. Because it's code compliance month, I wanted to just highlight 10,000 code cases is a lot, so I just want to recognize the staff again for the incredible work that they do to help address these things. If you don't know, you know, how to get in touch with code compliance, or you know, you have any other kind of breadth of issue within the city, I want to highlight again, the Action Center is kind of your one-stop shop to ask questions, to figure out where you need to get information. They will route you to the appropriate department. So their number is 405-366-5396, and their email is action.center@normanok.gov. And then if you go on the city website and search Action Center, there's also a web form that you can fill out that will get submitted to them. Also want to highlight, there's just a lot of dates and deadlines. The voter registration deadline for the upcoming midterm election in November is this Friday, October 14th. So if you need to update your registration or register for the first time, check your registration status. Now is a really good time to do that, to make sure that you are eligible to vote in our upcoming November election. And then, sorry, Regret Collective is having a mutual aid fair in November. They're requesting Thanksgiving meal donations and... They're requesting Thanksgiving meal donations, and reach out to them on Facebook for any questions about that. I think those are all of the items that I've got down tonight.
All right. I was also going to mention the deadline to register to vote this Friday. I love me some Code Compliance, so October being Code Compliance and a month in the city of Norman, I'm really digging it, and I had the greatest Columbus Day yesterday, and I hope you did too.
Only some things I can say. So here we go. Current status: Enjoying the freedom to publicly express my dissatisfaction with an increasingly abnormal status quo. There is a time and place for making others uncomfortable, and I know the time for causing discomfort comes when I, a brown person with a whole history that will not be whitewashed, opt out of narcissistic displays of nationalism. Let's be clear: patriotism is an adherence to the ideals of the United States, and nationalism is loyalty to the end group versus acting in the interests of the entire country. Thus, I've come to realize my time on council will be met with obstruction and bad faith actors who long for the days of the sundown town. Which is to say, you can change a street name a lot faster than you can overhaul the culture that created a Debar, aka Dean's Row, in the first place, and I do not need to charge thirty dollars a plate to let the public know how I really feel about any of that when I can do it for free and on record. Many in my family, including my spouse, have temporarily given up their First Amendment right in order to serve this country. However, I have chosen to define my career choices and public service in words and action. Anyone harboring authoritarian tendencies would do well to remember what our First Amendment encompasses before thinking the rest of the populace can be gaslit into believing revisionist histories and accepting false narratives without protest. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. I don't need to stand for the pledge if my aim is to say enough of the hypocrisy every single time and mean it. They say actions speak louder than words, anyway. And through disrupting the illusion that all of us up here respect election results and other institutional best practices, like the Code of Ethics, of which I have learned from my brief time serving, means zilch in the way of enforcement. So here we are. Moving on, there is an art walk on Friday night. You can probably register to vote at it. A downtown pantry painting party from six-thirty to seven-thirty on the west-facing side of twenty-two to South Porter will also be happening. And last, we will have, as promised, an Affordable Housing Town Hall, October nineteenth, from six-thirty to nine PM. You can submit questions in advance to public affairs@normanok.gov. Questions may be submitted until four PM October eighteenth. If you do not make that deadline, you will need to be present at Town Hall on October nineteenth to ask panelists your questions or present affordable housing ideas that may, with existing resources, be viable, and if not viable, what actions we could take to see that come into play. The goal is to connect with seasoned professionals working in Norman while critically thinking about our affordable housing challenges and how we might be better, how we might be more cohesive to better meet those challenges in the future. That's it.
Oh, is it my turn? Okay, well, I will just address the elephant in the room. This is a Band-Aid on my forehead. That's what that is. I know you're thinking, what's wrong with your face? It's a Band-Aid. Okay, moving right along. Councilmember Schuler stole my notes on some things, but it is the most wonderful time of the year. Ward Six, most of us are Thursday trash pickup people, so our Big Trash Day will be October twenty-ninth. I've been holding on to things for months. I look forward to unloading that, so thank you, City of Norman, for doing that. I'd like to see it done more often. I posted the new ward boundaries the other day on my Facebook, and people were like, what is this? And so I would like to see the city and if my fellow council members would agree to share your new ward boundaries. I know that my ward changed the most, but everyone else's did a little bit, so to educate them, let them know they might have moved. A lot of my people moved. It's very touching that they didn't want to move, so thank you. So we could do that, maybe like a social media campaign too, Darryl. Thank you so much. Okay, I am very disappointed if you didn't pick up on the mayor's announcement. We will not be discussing the bid tonight. I do think that's a very unfortunate thing, and I hope that Mr. Brewer will come back again. The Downtowners, everybody come together, and we could do something like this for our city. And I think that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to encourage everybody to put on your calendar to attend the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting October twenty-seventh, four PM here at City Hall. In this committee, once a month, we get an update from city staff about the public transit system, about the ridership report, about the budget, about our future plans, things like that. So if public transit is of any interest to you at all, I would definitely encourage you to attend that meeting, or you can watch it on the City of Norman's YouTube as well if you are not able to attend. It's available live and on replay anytime. So we also get updates about road construction projects, voter-approved bond projects, Norman Forward projects, things like that, real community planning and transportation-related things. So if those things are of interest to you, like they are to me when it comes to local government, I definitely encourage you to attend that committee. And feel free to email or contact any of us if you have any comments or questions or suggestions that you would like to be brought up in that committee. Also want to encourage everybody to register to vote by Friday at five PM, I believe, or update your registration if you've moved or anything like that. Voting, in my opinion, is vitally important, especially at the local level, and so it really matters a lot. It matters in the state elections. Every single vote can really make all the difference, and we've seen that time and time again in a lot of elections in recent years, where they've come down to a handful of votes or a few dozen votes, you know, out of several thousands. So it really does matter, and I want to encourage everybody to make sure you get out there and exercise that right. Also want to encourage everybody to put on your calendar the Norman International Festival and the presentation we saw tonight, October twenty-third at two PM at Reeves Park, and Ward Seven, as other council members have mentioned. I think that will be a very good event, and the international kind of diversity we have in Norman is really one of the earliest memories I have of growing up in the public school system here in Norman and attending Kennedy and Irving. And it's definitely one of the things that I've always thought made us stand out in a positive way compared to a lot of other cities in Oklahoma, was the wide range of diversity and backgrounds that we have in our city. Also would encourage everybody to attend the Affordable Housing Town Hall. Affordable housing is becoming one of the most serious issues that we're facing, in my opinion, in the state of Oklahoma, in the city of Norman. We've long been known for being an affordable place to live with a lot of cheap land, and that's not so much the case anymore. We may still be on the lower end compared to a lot of other states, but it is becoming a lot more expensive for people to buy homes in Oklahoma. A lot of people who are trying to finance buying a home are being shut out by a lot of what I would describe as out-of-state cash buyer investors. And if you're trying to finance a home, you have no chance of competing with someone who has cash and who can offer more than the value, which is another issue we're seeing. And so a lot of Oklahomans, a lot of Norman residents who are low-income and rely on cheap or affordable housing are finding themselves unable to find that housing or maintain it as apartment complexes are being sold to out-of-state corporations, and rents are being raised considerably, double, triple in some cases, and incomes in Oklahoma are just not keeping up with that rise in cost. So that is a real serious issue. It's why the city council has had to take up the issue of affordable housing and searching for ways to address it, because it is really becoming a problem. And if we don't do anything, lack of affordable housing will lead to more people becoming homeless and living on the street in our city and throughout the rest of the state. And so it is serious, and I encourage everybody to attend. Also want to make a note about Norman North High School. I was in sixth grade when it was first announced, and they had a city-wide, or Norman Public School-wide survey of what the colors should be and what the mascot should be, and I don't remember what I voted back then, but I remember it being a really big deal, and everybody was very excited about it. And a piece of trivia that I would, Norman trivia that I would leave with you all about it, is that Norman North High School's original name was not Norman North High School. It was actually Norman High School North, and in the year 2000, they changed it officially to Norman North High School. So various reasons behind that, depending on who you talk to, you might get a different answer for the reason behind that, but it was an interesting thing back then. Also would note that I had the honor of serving with former Ward Eight Councilmember Dan Quinn when I first was on council in 2014. He was the very first principal at Norman North High School. He was the principal at Norman High School, and then when Norman North opened, he was picked to be the first principal there. So pretty cool history from him, and his wife, Marie Quinn, is probably the main reason I ended up in this seat. Her leadership class I took at Norman High, senior year, required me to come to a city council meeting, so, and I was hooked ever since, so. I know. Also want to mention the Big Trash Day for most of Ward Seven. It's on Wednesdays, so check out the city website for what pickup day you're in for. And then also want to mention the ward boundary changes. There is some changes to Ward Seven. We are losing some folks to Ward Four and Ward One. So I will be posting, I did post it sort of yesterday, but when it's officially changed over, I'll be changing the Ward Seven group's picture to the new ward boundary maps and making sure that everybody understands where they're at now. I've definitely had some questions. And then the last thing I have too is mentioning Indigenous Peoples' Day. It is a part of Oklahoma history. It's a part of the United States' history, and a lot of Norman's history comes from indigenous peoples and tribes and people that were here before the city of Norman existed and people that are still here today. And I would definitely encourage everybody, if you have the opportunity, to check out the Jacobson House here in Norman. And for the next two days, it's still in Ward Seven, but it will become part of Ward Four in a few days. But it's a piece of Norman history. It's a piece of Native history, and it's right here in Ward Seven. It's open to the public. There's some investments that are coming into it to fix it up a little bit and improve it and make sure that it's available to everybody for years to come. So thank you all for listening to my rant here, and pass it on. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Much like my colleagues have stated, I was going to draw attention to Big Trash Day, ward boundaries, voter deadlines, so thank you to all for doing my work for me. So I will end with what Councilmember Foreman alluded to, and the fact that we will not be able to hear the bid presentation tonight. This is something that I have a lot of strong opinions on, and I'm going to save those opinions because I'm afraid I will say something that I might regret tomorrow. But I will leave it with this, that if we want to be an attractive destination for talent, business, quality of life initiatives, these are the kind of things we have to pass as a city, and I think it's a real shame, a real missed opportunity that is going to set Norman back who knows how long. But I know that there's other cities that are going to pass this by because of this decision, so I look forward to being able to take this up in the future and really hope that we can get it across the finish line this time. And to borrow a quote from former councilmember Dan Quinn, "Shop Norman Local."
Mayor has no items. All right, consent docket.
Yes, ma'am. So we've had a couple of conversations about the consent docket not being read by title, so I would like to clarify, because I found in the charter. So Article eleven, Legislative Department, Section One, is how ordinances, it says, sorry, reads as ordinances how adopted. So I'm going to read the whole thing, but then I'm going to draw a note to the section that I think requires us to read all of our ordinances or resolutions. So the section reads, "Five members of the council shall constitute a quorum, and the affirmative vote of five members shall be necessary to adopt any motion, resolution, or ordinance, or pass any measure. Upon every vote, the ayes and nays shall be called and recorded, and every motion, resolution, or ordinance shall be reduced to writing and read before the final vote is taken thereon. The mayor shall have no power to veto any measure, and he shall have a vote on all questions. Every resolution or ordinance passed by the council must be signed by the mayor or the mayor pro tem acting in that capacity and be recorded and published before the same shall be enforced, except as otherwise here and there provided." So it's the second sentence that I'm most worried about, where it says, "Upon every vote, the ayes and nays shall be called and recorded, and every motion, resolution, or ordinance shall be reduced to writing and read before the final vote is taken thereon."
A couple of things, Your Honor. One of the thoughts is that sounds exactly how we process ordinances, but would agree that we don't do resolutions that way, unless Mrs. Muckler has that one off the top of her head. It may require a little digging to figure out where those two, ordinance versus resolutions, kind of deviated in our process based on that language. Counselor, what might you know?
Well, I would agree. That was going to be my comment. Is that the heading of that, is ordinances how adopted? And so I do think that is controlling to some extent. I think we would want to look further into the language read, what exactly that means in the context of all of it, and that's certainly something we can do.
So another question on that. So if we find that we have been in violation by not reading ordinances by title specifically about zoning applications, because they have to give a first reading, and so would we be technically, all the things that have not been read into the record, be subject to not being compliant, to having been read based on our charter?
That is not a conclusion I would jump to. They are read into the record before a final vote, and so in this instance...
But we haven't been reading the titles?
Ordnances on second reading are read by title.
Okay, so what about everything else?
Right, that's something we can definitely look into, the meaning of the word read and the scope of this as it's intended.
So tonight, if we don't read them as we continue this out, we could potentially be putting ourselves in violation of our charter and things that we have moved through a consent docket that have not been read by title, that our ordinances could be deemed that we didn't actually do what we were supposed to do?
I wouldn't be prepared to give an opinion that we're in violation and of any charter provision to the extent that anything needs to be ratified. That's certainly something that can be done as well.
But we appreciate that. It's definitely of interest, and we'll plow into that with vigor first thing in the morning. We'll bring you an answer and an opinion on that one.
Yeah, I mean, just based on what I've read, I think that it seems pretty clear to me that items need to be read into the record.
How would you like me to proceed, Councilman?
Again, we've not made a determination that there is an issue. You're free to read the items into the record if that's what you prefer. It's what we've done in the past, but there is a basis for the manner in which we've been doing it.
Proceed as you are comfortable.
Yes.
Well, I believe that consent docket can just be passed as a consent docket. I need a motion to place items five through twenty-two, excluding items fourteen and twenty-one, on the consent docket. I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to place the items five through twenty-two, excluding items fourteen and twenty-one, on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The consent docket is passed unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket. Is there a second? Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Yes, ma'am.
I had a question from a constituent, so I will read the item title. Consideration of Acceptance, Approval, Rejection, Amendment, and/or Postponement of a Grant in the Amount of $71,489 from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, DOJ/ OJP, Through the Office for Victims of Crime, OVC, and Authorized through the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, to be used by the Police Department to employ and provide training for a victim advocate, Contract K-222359, and Budget Appropriations as outlined in the staff report. There were four questions that came into our email. I'm not familiar with the grant at all, and I do have an orientation scheduled with Chief Foster, I think, next week. But this were the, these were the questions posed to us. Or this, this is how it was stated. One, any complaints about MPD officers or internal personal records. Two, any records related to such internal personal investigations are in virtue of the fact, also personal records. This is the part that person learned just that morning. Three, MPD has a sole discretion to keep either personal records confidential or release them. Four, MPD's discretion in this regard is unreveivable. Courts no longer have a say in quotations. So this person is wondering, it seems to them impossible for the MPD to provide the confidentiality assurances required when someone claims to be a victim of crime committed by an MPD officer. The MPD claims to have unreveable discretion here and uncertain, and they're uncertain that the confidentiality would be maintained even if assurances were provided. I did go to the city clerk office earlier to dig into this, but it was unclear to both of us.
And Councilmember, I'm probably the person that's most qualified to answer that question based on my conversation with one of our citizens. The issue is this. We were discussing the issue of what type of discretion does the Police Department have regarding personnel investigations? We weren't talking about any other records maintained by the Police Department that are required to be kept confidential by law. The Oklahoma Open Records Act, specifically 51OS, Section 24A.7, states, "A public body has sole discretion to keep personnel investigations confidential, internal personnel investigation confidential." And what does the term discretion mean? Discretion means you can keep it confidential. Discretion means you can disclose it to the public. This discussion was about a specific incident that involved a complaint that was made by a citizen that the citizen disclosed on Facebook. The citizen on Facebook said, "I filed a complaint with the Norman Police Department about this particular officer, about this particular issue, and I haven't heard a response from them." One of our former detectives was on that list of individuals participating in the discussion and advised that citizen, "You should probably contact Professional Standards to get an answer." There were some back and forth on Facebook about whether he contacted them or not. And ultimately what happened is that officer contacted Professional Standards. This information was put on Facebook, says this guy filed a complaint. I'm just trying to determine whether or not it's been investigated and whether he has been provided with the information about its disposition. The answer to the question was yes. We've received it, we've investigated it, and we have advised him of the disposition. That information was then again posted on Facebook that I've contacted Professional Standards and they told me, yes, they had a complaint, yes, it was investigated, and yes, you've been advised of the disposition. The issue that was raised then was, well, I think it was a violation of some confidentiality provision for the Internal Affairs Division or Professional Standards to even let you know I filed a complaint. And the response to that was, you disclosed that on Facebook. You're the person that disclosed that information on Facebook. All this detective was doing was trying to assist with, did we get it? Was it investigated? Were you advised of the findings? And the answer is yes. We went round and round in this discussion by email. Ultimately me saying, look, in my opinion, in this specific fact circumstances, there's no violation of confidentiality. Again, you disclosed the fact that a complaint had been filed on Facebook for anybody who has access to that to see. And for the department to simply provide information about the disposition of that particular complaint does not violate any confidentiality. Now, in the information that you're reading, that conversation and my statement with regard to this particular fact circumstances has been construed to mean any police officer at the PD can disclose any information as confidential and there's no consequence. And the answer to that question is, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a specific incident. We're talking about a specific statutory provision. Personal records are governed by Section 24A.7. Police Department records are governed by 24A.8. And there's some specific provisions with regard to Police Department records. There's an A and there's a B. Records under A are required to be made available for public inspection and copying. They include things like facts regarding an arrest. They include documents with regard to some police reports that are filed. Not all police reports, but some police reports. Subsection B goes on to talk about records that aren't required to be made public under A can be made public under B if a court determines that the public interest outweighs the reason for the Police Department to keep those records confidential. So totally different subject matter or totally different statutory provisions with regard to personnel records, again, which Internal Affairs Investigations would be considered internal personnel investigations. And again, the Police Department has discretion to keep confidential. The records that we're talking about that would be subject to the provision that you're considering tonight would be evaluated under 24A.8 for police records. And those records would not be available for public inspection at any point in time. PD would not have discretion to make those records available to the public. I mean, there, if you can imagine, the Police Department has a wide variety of different records. One of the ones I think you could use an example are juvenile records. And juvenile records are governed in Title 10A. Juvenile records are required to be kept confidential. And even if an attorney comes to me with a subpoena that says, "I want a copy of this juvenile record," the statute says, I have to go to the court, present those records to the court, and the court has to make that determination as to whether or not those records can be made available to the public. Now, if a police officer were to make those records available without going to the court to get the court's approval first, number one, under the provisions in Title 10A, that's a crime that that officer could be prosecuted for. But again, it would also be a violation of policy for which the department, after investigation, could take the appropriate discipline. So the issue that we're talking about today has nothing to do with the discussion about internal personnel investigations. This is about records that are governed by a different statutory provision. And again, there's no basis for arguing, and I don't know of any information that's ever been brought to light that indicates that any police officer has ever released any information that was required to be kept confidential. And if they did, they weren't disciplined as appropriate by the court. So.
So that's like when we're digging into it and looking at the confidentiality parts. And it says that there's mandatory reporting on some things, but in general, they will not, I guess it'll be anonymized data that is passed forward for statistic reasons?
I think that's correct. And if you know, if you know, the Police Department on our website has an open data portal. And the open data portal has statistics with regard to complaints that are filed. They'll have some demographics as to those particular complaints and how they're reported. This is a similar mechanism. You don't give the information, the demographic information, name, address, and so forth. It's just a statistical analysis of evaluation of the information of the complaints that are filed to give the public some sort of idea as to what type of complaints are filed, how they get disposed of, and things along those lines. And the provision that you're looking at is similar to that particular function. And there are provisions in the Open Records Act that allow that, that allow some information that's otherwise required to be kept confidential to be used for statistical purposes. Again, to advise the public a little bit about what that department is, the activity they're conducting. Any other questions?
Other questions from council? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Oh, I asked for comments. I didn't, questions. Do I have a comment? I'm sorry. I withdraw that.
An non-answer from figuring out whether we have to read items by title. I am going to vote no on the consent docket just in case. We are putting ourselves in violation for the future. Just wanted to make that publicly aware and clear.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from council or questions from council? All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The consent docket was approved by a vote of seven, no, six to three, voting against Councilmember Grant, Councilmember Schuler, Councilmember Studley.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23, Public Hearing Regarding a Grant in the Amount of $42,341 The City of Norman, the Moore Police Department, and the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office from the United States Department of Justice.
We tore one off consent. We got to go with that one first.
Got to go with that.
And I dropped it out.
My error?
No, I didn't put it in there.
Item number 14, Consideration of Approval, Rejection, Amendment, and/or Postponement of Contract K-22222356. A service and lease agreement by and between the City of Norman, Oklahoma, and the Food and Shelter Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $305,298 for the 2022-23 Emergency Winter Shelter located at 109 West Gray Street, and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Comments from?
We have a motion.
We have a motion to approve. A motion, a motion and second to approve. The motion on the floor is to approve the item number 14.
We're not going to vote. We'll have to have discussion.
We'll have to have discussion. Boy, I'm just getting lost.
Start, yeah. Start with council comments.
Council comments. Question?
Yes, I'm really curious. Can you tell us?
Where this money is coming out of? Is this the RFP? What, what is this?
In our prior conversation with council about the operators agreement, the remaining balance of previously appropriated CARESAC dollars is the first half, and the other half will come from general fund resources.
So just to be clear, this is separate from the RFP that we've discussed previously, and we are all still under the same understanding that Food and Shelter is currently looking for a building as a permanent place and that this is just a temporary place and those are two separate budgets?
Completely.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Council comments?
Schuler.
Councilmember?
Schuler.
I wasn't, that was from before.
Oh.
Councilmember Lynn?
I had a question for chief, or a couple of questions for chief. Chief, when we had this open, this emergency shelter open in downtown last time, can you name some of the major crimes that happened at this shelter?
We had several things happen, but you know, there were stabbings, a shooting, different things like that happened near at the shelter.
Would you say, just, I, I know you don't have numbers on calls and stuff because I just kind of told you I was going to ask you some questions real quick, but would you think, in your estimation, was that place, was it a drain on your resources? Was it a constant battle to be going there with our, our police or what? How would you describe it?
Several calls there. Yes, there was a lot of calls in that area. And it was, it was a task to get people to cover it. It was.
Would you, have you seen any difference since that has closed?
I, I couldn't say if there's a difference on the number of calls or anything like that. I just don't know if there's a change because we could have calls around the city. They're just not concentrated. There's definitely a difference in that location.
Okay. That's it. That's all I had for you. I did have a, for Mr. City Manager, thanks, chief. Was this the only proposal that was brought back for this?
This, there were two proposals initially returned related to shelter services. The negotiations based on the two proposals submitted led us to the agreement that's on the agenda tonight for council's consideration. And this being the temporary solution in a building that council has identified to be at some point utilized by the Factory Obscura Group for an entertainment art venue in the downtown. There were locations proposed in what was submitted, and they were substantially more expensive to be able to take advantage of other sites proposed, and they were not secured contractually. This did wind up being literally the only location available for this particular service for this particular winter.
So there is, it is city property?
This is city owned.
And what did we spend last year? Like, just on a monthly basis, what was our?
About $40,000 a month.
$40,000 a month. So is this far outside the lines of what we did last year financially?
Very close, very similar. The level of service on the inside in terms of staffing and security will be very similar to what took place last year. Last year, the duration was a little longer because we had some grant dollars that supported the operation, and this year, those grant dollars are not available.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Councilmember?
Sorry.
You're good.
Would you say that it is also a drain on police resources to constantly go to parks and creeks or any other place that there might be a tent where people call and report seeing an unhoused human being?
Yes.
Okay. Would you also agree that it is safer for unhoused humans as well for, as for our community to have unhoused humans in a place to sleep at night?
Yes.
Okay. And I just would also like to, that's, that's all I have, sorry. And then. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but we had a few deaths of unhoused people last year due to the weather. And so I don't really think that there's a price tag that we have on human life. There isn't.
Councilmember Holmer?
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
So we have operated a year-round shelter the last two years, partly because of extra funding basically that we received.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Your Honor.
And we did identify, this started as a winter warming shelter in the library next door a few years ago.
Correct.
When it was empty. It's under construction now, if you all haven't been in there. And so, we used it the first year as an overnight warming shelter after we had a few, in sixteen-seventeen era, we had a few deaths of individuals that were out on the street at night in the winter, on Main Street, in the Main Street area. And so, when the library became empty, we decided to use it for that purpose, as just a warming shelter for the winter. And then we found out that there was a need for year-round, that weather and heat and all sorts of things in Oklahoma can be pretty brutal. But with this particular case, our decision tonight, we're talking about just a winter, just the winter months, and could you say what that timeframe specifically is for the public record?
End of October through the middle of March. And the efforts, while this shelter proposal is on the table for council's consideration tonight, staff's efforts have not ceased in terms of the pursuit of a permanent location. We do recognize through news stories that the state of Oklahoma, through their ARPA allocation, has awarded eighty-seven million dollars to the State Department of Mental Health for the reconstruction of a new Griffin Hospital that will result in the land sale of existing Griffin real property. And there is interest on the private sector to acquire a portion of existing Griffin property on which permanent shelter could be developed. So those efforts will continue, because we know that if we get through the middle of March of 2023, summer will be upon us, and we'll be right back to square one looking for a location. So we will not cease our efforts until a permanent solution has been identified.
I understand five months is a while, but it kind of is the most brutal weather months in Oklahoma. I mean, just the way it is. We have one month of spring, nice weather, and one month of fall, and then it's summer and winter the rest of the time, is what it appears to me, anyway. So this is really to address making sure that folks aren't left on the street in downtown Norman, or anywhere in Norman, during the coldest nights and months of the year. And the current building is a building we own, as is already noted. And the building, we were using it, what were we using it for?
It housed our building maintenance operation. So we had people office-ing in the front portion of the building, and we had maintenance inventory items in the back half. We have relocated the personnel and most of the inventory to Service Commercial Building up near North Base, and the rest of the storage that occupied the space has been moved out of the building to make room for what will be Factory Obscura. So when this proposal came forward, we did reach out, made contact with Factory Obscura, let them know what was going to happen in the short window, and they were on board.
So, to be clear, we do own the property, and it is empty. We don't have a particular use for it, that we need it as a city for at the moment. We do have future plans for it, and I think we mostly agree this isn't a long-term location for this service. Is that your understanding?
That is staff's understanding.
Okay. Okay, those are kind of the detailed questions. I want to make sure, public record, about the length of time here and the purpose. Thank you.
Chief? We'll get that mic back up.
Trying.
Try again.
Talk.
Is it working?
There we go. There we go.
Also, I just wanted to highlight the location. How far is it away from the station?
Just behind our station, or to the side of it, or, I don't know how far, a few hundred feet.
What, do you feel like that location, if the temporary warming shelter was there, what would that do for you guys keeping an eye on it? I mean, like, you're driving by it all the time.
Yeah, I mean, we would drive by it all the time, coming and going. I don't know that that helps.
Well, how would you envision this temporary shelter operating in such close proximity to y'all?
Well, I, I hope it operates better, and I hope there's not the issues that we had, and I'm sure April will do a great job at it.
What, do you think there were some takeaways from the previous shelter that you would like us as a council to consider? Is it funding? Is it?
No. It's just that there are some different people in the community than there has been in the past that cause us some issues, and we just have to deal with those people.
Is it substance abuse and mental health?
Yes.
Does 988 offer a chance to kind of help mitigate that?
They can't help mitigate that, but on the people that I'm talking about, they can deal with the people that is more cooperative and wants to go get help. This is a more violent, small group within the community, within the homeless community, that abuses the homeless community and others. And we just hopefully have to get them and get them the help that they need before they commit acts of violence.
Do you think there's any type of policy that would add to violence prevention at that location?
No. I think if we're checking the people in, we know who's coming and what their needs are, they can be directed to the help that they need to get, and hopefully, our Continuum of Care Group will reach out to them and know where they can contact them, or they can contact them at that location the next night, maybe. I don't know the hours they work or anything, but the idea is that when we get the information and see that the help that they need, our Continuum of Care Group can reach out to those people and offer them assistance that they need.
So it'd be recognizing things like somebody's addiction, or if maybe they need medication?
Yeah, anything. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a social worker or that type of person, but I would assume those people could reach out to them and give them better help than I could before we end up dealing with someone.
Okay. Thank you for answering.
All right. Councilmember? Yep?
Okay. Me, Band-Aid still. Okay. So I actually proposed this location, sort of a last resort. We were spinning our wheels, we didn't know what options that we had, and I knew we owned this building, and I knew it was mostly vacant. I'm thrilled that we have the opportunity to use it. I don't like that this is where we are. We are clearly at our last resort of options as winter is approaching. I feel comfortable doing this in a city-owned building. Our first warming shelter was in a city-owned property, and that went fine. I like that it's not directly in the middle of a bunch of private businesses, it's not in the middle of a residential area, it's in a city campus area, so I feel comfortable with placing that there. I do have just one question for Ms. Hypal, if you don't mind answering my question. Very easy question. Yes or no question? And my question is, as the operators of this shelter, are you, whenever it closes, are you going to be busing them over to Food and Shelter for breakfast and lunches? Are you going to provide that service also?
So we're not currently providing it. Of course, we work closely with Caravans, and Caravans does a lot of great work for people, especially those with mobility issues, so we'll be, yeah, we'll be leaning on them a little bit, but we don't necess, we don't have transportation.
Okay, so we do have the options to make sure that they can go from one place to the next. Excellent. Easy question.
Right.
Easy question. Okay, yes, and we will have city vans in maybe eighteen months, you know, something like that, Sean, wherever you are. So clearly, if they're grouped together in one place, we might have to have the cops called. If they're not, we might have to have the cops called. So for me, I think it's a no-brainer. Why not put them in a place that could save lives over the winter? So I'll be, I'll be enthusiastic, yes, for this.
Councilmember?
My questions were addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torturellin?
My questions were addressed, too, but I have another question to the city manager. Remind us about the services offered at the shelter. So what, when they go there for the night, is there case management there?
There are intake individuals, and definitely Food and Shelter are a member of the Continuum of Care, so they'll follow HMIS, I believe that's the right acronym of the software, where everybody coming into the shelter gets added, so that they, their needs can be identified, and those in search of permanent housing can be put into a housing tract. So the most important aspect of shelter service is that intake and that registration in the, into the software that, that is provided by HUD, that allows for kind of the initiation of service delivery.
And remind me again, remind us, is it single individuals or family members, too?
In, in, in previous shelter activities, it was primarily individuals. When families did present themselves, or, you know, potentially mom and children, or a dad and a child, other resources were brought in, and they may have utilized hotel vouchers or been directed to the Salvation Army, where they did have family units available.
Okay. And we already answered the question, how many beds again?
Thirty-eight beds, and I'm going to say that off the top of my head, forty beds. So Mr. Purinton worked on the document, worked with the Fire Marshal's Office to make sure we were in compliance with all those health and safety codes, and based on square footage, forty beds available.
Okay. And just to reiterate, that if families do show up, the process does include getting them to shelter, like at a hotel or a voucher to get to a hotel?
Yes, or, or Salvation Army.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any comments from the public?
I live in Ward Seven, and I just want to mention that the Director of Food and Shelter has an outstanding track record, and I urge the council to vote for this.
Hi, I'm Jade. I'm one of Norman's unhoused. Just vote hell yes on this. This is a no-brainer. Why do you even got to talk about it some more? Just, just vote.
My name is Melissa Gill, and I'm a Norman resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Women in Action for All Group. We're a small group, but we make up for it with enthusiasm. We're in favor of this contract with Food and Shelter. They have the professionalism, the experience, and the ability to provide this crucial service to our community, and especially to the members thereof who need a warm place to stay this winter. Please vote yes.
Dana Miller, and I'm a Norman resident of Ward Three, and I don't know if I'm for it or not. I mean, my first thing is, the definition of help is assisting someone in accomplishing something. Are we assisting them in improving their life so that they're not here at the, the warming shelter again next year, and the next year, and the next year? Are we helping them be back at the warming shelter year after year? I've always held the belief, if you give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. If you teach a man to fish, he can eat for a lifetime. Are we really providing any assistance to these folks so that they're not in this same condition next year, and the next year, and the next year? And I'm wondering, are our homeless numbers going up? Are they going down? Are they staying the same? They can only house forty people for the winter. I would think we have a few more people needing services than that. And again, if we don't provide other services to them, we're going to be supporting them the rest of their lives. And what do we do when it gets to where three-fourths of Norman is homeless, and the one-fourth is supporting them?
I've got a dress, man, I'm sorry. Hi, Rachel Wyatt, Ward Eight, Chairwoman of Norman Caravans, and I'd like to specifically address that address. Since our inception from the ice storm last year, we have helped house over twenty-five people in the Norman community with jobs and housing where they are no longer homeless. We continue our mission without any help from the city of Norman, yet we implore you to potentially give us mileage reimbursement at the government rate to help us in our assistance to move these people from place to place, and assist them in their entry back into society. We provide them housing, we provide them jobs, we provide them case management. We need your help. There is a consistent community within the city of Norman that is desperate for your help, and we beg you to support us. We're doing it on our own right now. We need the city's assistance to help us. Please, please consider the shelter. Help April. Make sure that we help the homeless in this community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hannah. I'm in Ward One. I would like to implore you to vote yes on this shelter, but I would also like to ask for us all to consider, is the homeless population growing? If it is, it's because people are getting priced out of their homes. If people are getting priced out of their homes, then what can we do about it? We can band together, we can form tenants and labor unions, we can find regulations that punish slum lords, we can encourage Section Eight housing voucher acceptance. What we cannot do is turn against one another and the most vulnerable in our community. We cannot let people freeze on the street. And to answer your question earlier, yes, resources will be provided. That is the, that is the purpose of the HMIS survey, is to identify an entire range of needs, and then connect said individuals with resources to provide for those needs. Thank you.
How y'all doing? My name's Mark Pipkin. I'm homeless. I chose to be homeless, to get out of the house of a drunk, okay? I regret that decision, because it's pretty damn tough out there. I've had poison ivy for three weeks, ticks off of me every day, but I had no choice because the finer people of Norman tore down my camp beside Crest without a twenty-four-hour notice, and I lost everything. So now I'm in a tick-infested, poison ivy-infested place, all right? April and Food and Shelter has been a blessing. Caravans has moved me twice without any notice or anything. They have been a blessing. Now, if y'all would just please help these two people, organizations, I'd sure appreciate it. I'm not going to be at the warming station. I got me a plan. VA is going to get me housed, and I'll be good. But them other people, they need warming places. How would you like to sleep out in the cold in the winter, best when it got real cold? No, you wouldn't appreciate it. I don't care what the crime record is or anything else. You can't weigh that or judge that on one little old place, okay? How many deaths has been at Food and Shelter? How many stabbings? None, all right? That's just a stupid little old statistic. Please help us, all right? That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
I'm a little slower than the others, except for Mary Frances. Hello, everybody. Obviously, I wish for you to pass this tonight. I'm kind of sad that it was pulled off the consent docket. This should pass unanimously in this town to help the people of Norman. Last year, Norman Caravans ran out into a snowstorm and saved the lives of countless people from the river and various other places. You don't know, you don't know what it's like to pick somebody up when they're about to freeze to death. I do. It's hard. We took them to places. We took them to Food and Shelter, and we took them to the, and we took them to the warming shelter every day. shelter every day. We knew that if we got in there, they were safe from the cold, safe from freezing to death. If we don't have a shelter, we're gonna have many more deaths this year than we did last year. I'm tired of burying people because it's cold outside. Please help us, pass this, thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Evan Dunn, I live at 1400 Garfield Avenue, and I just wanna say that I don't think this goes far enough. I know that Mrs. Hyple is great at her job, but she needs more resources. They don't have Chief Gardner, they don't have mental health workers who can accommodate the scale of our problem, so thank you.
My name is Jacob, I live in Ward One. I just wanna urge the council members to vote "Yes" on this. I'm a young person, I've not built up a lot of wealth in my life, and I know that that means, like many, I'm only a medical emergency or two away from being unhoused myself, and I cannot imagine if during that time I was also in danger for my life due to the weather and the elements. I urge you to vote "Yes" because I know that as a resident of this town, I would feel much, much safer.
Marguerite Larson, Ward Six. So I have addressed this issue more than once. More than once this issue has come up, more than once it has been addressed, more than once people look at you like you're crazy. We have a homeless problem, we have an unhoused problem, because many, many factors. The housing issue is a problem. There is people that have lost their jobs, they have no address, you can't have an address, you can't get a job, period, the end, end of discussion. To be humane, to have some humanity and some compassion for these people, that I don't see how you could say "no," I just don't see how you can. You should go out there and speak to them and talk to them and hear their stories, and you understand that they're human beings and they need to be treated like one. A warming shelter is going to help them live maybe another, I don't know, twenty years or so. So why not? Why not? Why not do this? And I agree with the previous speaker that we need to encapsulate more, that it needs to be expanded, but this is a start. It appears to be that it's going to be well taken care of, it's gonna be well, is what I'm looking for. Thank you. So to me, there is no reason to say "no." You should all just say "yes," there's no reason to say "no."
Alex Lampier, Ward Two. I just wanna say that the winters are only gonna get colder, the summers are only gonna get hotter, and we can kick this can down the road and let more people die, or we can do something about it now, so please vote "Yes."
Hi, Lauren Vanderberg, Ward Four. Please vote "Yes." The time that falls between the first frost and the last frost is well over a hundred days. A hundred days is too many chances to freeze out in the cold alone, so please give members of our committee the chance to make it through those nights, make it, you know, many more nights preferably, so please vote "Yes."
Not much faster than Mary Francis.
Hi, I'm Dr. John Scammyhorn, retired chemical engineer. I've lived in Ward One for forty-one years. Homelessness and the need for low-cost housing are incascentant problems into which a seemingly unlimited amount of money can be dumped without much progress. In contrast, Norman has real needs like crumbling infrastructure and gross underfunding of our law enforcement and need for new fire stations where these funds could be better spent. Given the relatively few people helped by low-cost housing and warming shelters with other pressing municipal needs, spending money on this project is not prudent. There's always more things to spend money on than there is money.
Keep the comments.
More generally, the city shouldn't be in the business of directly providing low-cost housing. Private entities and community partners are much better equipped to deal with these, with housing needs. Public funding of such private efforts should be done with much caution as can become a money sink, as has been mentioned by others, impacting relatively few citizens compared to core infrastructure, municipal functions like police and fire protection, and utilities like drinking water and garbage, which impact most Normanites. I suggest that housing and shelters are best addressed by private agencies with non-public funds. There's never enough money for all we want to do. In this case, those who need to help the poor, who wanna help the poor and unhoused, should do so with their own private funds, not allocating the resources of their fellow citizens. Thank you.
Hi, Steve Lett, Ward Four. I was thinking I wouldn't need to come up here, but I really enjoyed the previous person's contribution and just thought he shouldn't have the last word. So, yeah, so please, with all of your private money, mister, would you please donate that to Norman Caravans and Food and Shelter? Thank you. Okay, so, because unfortunately, life in the nonprofit world means that we're struggling all the time to do what we're doing. Right now, my friend Alan and me, we work like sixty to eighty hours a week, we get paid nothing. We drive our own cars, our cars are breaking down, we're trying to help folks, we're doing what you say we should be doing, so please hand us that money so we can actually pay people to do it. Yeah, yeah, we haven't had much help from y'all either, but you know, hopefully in the future. Love you guys. So, I mean, obviously, yes, the past, since June twenty-seventh, it was June twenty-seventh when the shelter closed. That was a hell of a day. We, there isn't a timer here, there used to be a three-minute timer.
It is, you're on one minute and twenty-seven seconds, sir.
Left?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thanks for that. So, yeah, June twenty-seventh, it was a terrible day, it was a terrible day when the shelter closed, and it was the city's fault that it closed early. You should not have gone to a month-to-month lease, that was a really bad decision. And I had the terrible job of driving these people to nowhere, to nowhere, they had nowhere to go. We tried to find them places to camp. As the chief mentioned, folks call, ask our friends to leave. We get calls, we try to pack 'em up, but there's nowhere to go, there was nowhere to go. So we need a place to take our friends, we need a place, so please vote "Yes."
Hi, I'm Alan with Ward Eight. I'm a member of Norman Caravans, just wanted to say enthusiastically, we support this, please vote "Yes" on this. Yeah, like my friends have all said before me, they're all better spoken than I am, but yeah, this is the only option, this is an essential thing that Norman needs or else people will die. A no vote against this is an act of violence, so please pass this, thank you.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I think Council Foreman actually said it best when she said that in a way, this is the last resort. It's apparently this plan or nothing, and it would be unconscionable to do nothing. So I'm gonna put on my professional hat, I am a philosophy professor by training and vocation, and I just wanna say that the idea that's been floated tonight, that saving members of our own community from preventable deaths is something that we can either pick up as a goal or lay down as potentially optional, I think is the death of the community. Once you have decided that there are lives that are worth investing in and that there are lives that are not worth investing in, you've essentially decided that you're breaking up the community to just hang with your friends. And I think Norman can do better than that, and I think this is pretty much the moral minimum for doing better than that. Assisting people to not be dead turns out to be helping them. We need to get people by, even though they're really barely getting by even with the shelter, while we help them overcome the obstacles in their life, some personal, but many of them structural, that create problems for them. So if we're gonna be a community at all, I think we should just fold up if we decide to say "no" to this tonight. It's the war of all against all that Hobbes warned us about, so let's vote for this, let's do the moral minimum, and then we can talk about affordable housing as the next step, okay? Thanks.
Hey there, Mike Davidson, Ward One. This is my first time getting up here to say anything, and I've been doing a lot of volunteer work with Norman Caravans over the last few months, and I can tell you, they're real people, they're humans, humans out there that will die this winter if you don't approve the shelter. They will die. And I will look at all of you again, 'cause I'll come back up here and I'll tell you their damn names, excuse me, because they're real humans. So if you don't approve this, that is on every single one of you up here, and I just want that to be known, because they're people. And how do we treat people? At a bare minimum, we give them the opportunity to live and to survive. As a society, I believe we can do that. Thank you.
Another first-timer, Luigi, Ward Four. I wasn't planning on speaking, but the lady over there truly inspired me. I think it's ridiculous, it's crazy to the rhetoric that we cannot help everyone, so let's not help anyone. That man, he served his country. Telling him that he needs to freeze to death this winter, it's anti-American. You cannot call yourself pro-American and then go to someone who serves this country and say, "No, sorry." Also, on the point of improving themselves, how can you improve yourself? How can you get to a better place? How can you apply for a job if you don't have a place to sleep, to rest safely without tick and poison ivy? If you don't have a place to take a shower, get yourself presentable, to apply for a job? This shelter, this place, is, even just the shelter itself, along with all the services it offers, a place to help people get into a better, more stable situation. Then you cannot self, you cannot call yourself pro-life and vote against this. No one here can oppose this and call themselves pro-life, because pro-life means not letting people die, freeze to death in the course of winter. And lastly, I'll quote the Bible. So in everything you do to others, what you would have them to do you, for this sums up the law and the prophets. And also there is a verse that says, "It is not to share your bread with the hungry and bring the homeless poor into your house. When you see the naked, cover him and hide yourself from your own flesh." So how can you call yourself Christian, any of you, and vote against this? Are you? Let's see, let's see if your actions match your words. Thank you.
Good evening, Cynthia Rogers, Ward Four. I'm gonna put on my economics professor hat and talk about public money, this idea that there are things you can and cannot do with public money. It's tax dollars, it's everybody in this room's money, everybody that shops in Norman. You absolutely can use public money in ways that you vote on and the public finds favorable to save lives, to serve your citizens, that's absolutely unacceptable, and I would argue a morally acceptable, purpose for public funds. That's what governments do, protect the health and security of citizens. So just because it's tax dollars or public dollars doesn't mean protecting the health of citizens, the health of your citizens is somehow off the table. So there we go, lecture over, thank you.
All right, any other further comments from council, council member? She's going.
I'm getting there.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen Shambora, and I'm in Ward Two. And I think there are a lot of chips on a lot of shoulders here. I usually don't come to these meetings, and I didn't intend to speak to anyone tonight. But I do know, I don't know about men's shelters, but I do know there are women's shelters. That women can get showers and get cleaned up, and they can clean their clothes. I do not, do not, I do know that for a fact, because I support that through my church, okay? You know, true, I agree with that lady over there, that you give, you teach a man to fish. My background, I'm from Minnesota, and I might be called by some of you as having a white privilege, okay? Well, let me tell you how I was raised. I was raised by German farmers. And if you know what German farmers are, or German dads, they really, they really knock that, you know, you were out there, you were out milking the cows, you were picking the rock, I was out there, okay? I don't think that's white privilege. We work for what we got. I think everybody needs to work for what you get. I'm sorry, that's how I was raised. But I went on, and I got a degree, not from the University of Oklahoma, I got a degree from the University of Oklahoma, but I got a degree from Iowa State University in Ames, Iowa, which I learned my major was food nutrition, food science, okay? So I have a background in teaching people how to cook and how to do that, and home economics it was from back then, it's not that anymore. But I also came here to Norman, I got a degree in nursing, I am in R End. I worked in case management, so yes, I think we do need to have a place where people don't freeze to death, but we have to do what this person over here said. I did case management as part of being in R End. So you can't keep throwing money at it through a hole, you gotta change things, you gotta change things. You know, there was a kitchen project, I was ready... I was ready-
Hang on. Hello. Okay. My apologies to the camera person in the corner, I don't know what news station you're in, but I do follow Damon Lane, a meteorologist, on Facebook, and he says that it will be near freezing early next week. So if we adopt this resolution tonight, how soon are we open for business, Mr. City Manager?
We've got some minor improvements to make inside the building in terms of fire suppression, wireless smoke detectors being installed, a couple of windows being removed from interior spaces, and a couple of spaces blocked off for access to the backside of the building. But Mr. Olson's building maintenance crew is actively working on it, and as soon as the last nail is driven and the last smoke detector turned on, we will call Ms. Hypal and we'll be ready to go.
Do we see that being like a week, a few days, the end of this week?
We may have some supplies on order waiting for delivery, beds, et cetera. So it could just be a matter of as soon as the beds are available, we should be able to-
Okay, because I remember it was October 26, 2020, because it cost us millions of dollars to clean up our ice storm of our beloved COVID money. So we're counting down, we're getting close. So hopefully it's sooner than later.
Full speed ahead, Your Honor.
Anyway, I distinctly remember when the polar vortex came through this town and it was negative 18 degrees outside. I don't know how anybody survives outside, sleeping at night in that kind of element. So while I do have reservations about the location, I do understand it's kind of our last resort and only option, and I have the full faith and confidence in Ms. Hypal that she'll run this facility in the same standard that she runs Food and Shelter, so I'll be gladly supporting this tonight.
I just want to add too, I have been getting calls and emails from folks who are concerned about encampments in the park, and I want to say that supporting this will be improving that situation, because those folks will have a place to stay, and especially as it gets colder, not trying to break into anything like a shed. So yeah, I'm supporting tonight.
Thank you. Just a few points that have been made, but just want to make sure to kind of explain my vote tonight. As has been mentioned, this is a last resort. That is definitely how I'm viewing this. The location is a last resort, and the city funding this is a last resort. If there were any churches, or nonprofits, or private organizations in this town that were able and willing to fund this, then the city would not need to. And I wouldn't support spending city money on it if those nonprofits and churches and private organizations in this town existed. We have a lot of great services in this town, but there's no single entity nonprofit-wise I know of that could take this on by themselves. And in my view and understanding of government, the purpose of government is to step in when the private sector cannot or will not address a problem. And this is a problem the private sector is not addressing in Norman. So if you are a member of the private sector that runs a business, or you're a member of a nonprofit that has the funding to take this over, please, approach us. I would rather not use city funding for this. But there is no other choice, in my view and in my information. And I find it to be an obligation and a responsibility I have as an elected representative of this town, to make sure that the most vulnerable people in our city are not left to fend for themselves on the street when it's the coldest times of the year. There's a lot of reasons for homelessness and a rise in it. Norman is a growing city. We are growing by almost 2,000 people per year. Based on the new census data, our population grew by almost 20,000 people. That's more than an entire city council ward worth of people that we could have added in the last 10 years. We had the third fastest and highest growth, population total growth, in the last 10 years in the state of Oklahoma. We grew by more than double the population of Moore in the last 10 years. They had 7,000 population growth, and again, we had almost 20,000. It's not even close. We're way ahead of them. Oklahoma City is a very large city. It's becoming much larger. It was one of only 11 cities in the United States in the census that grew by more than 100,000 people. Oklahoma City accounted for 49% of all population growth in the whole state of Oklahoma over the last 10 years. With that type of population growth is going to come issues of crime and homelessness. It's happening in Oklahoma City. If you go anywhere in Oklahoma City, you will see it. And it's not a matter of political issue. The mayor of Oklahoma City is a Republican. The mayor of Tulsa is a Republican, and they have homelessness issues. It's happening in every large city in the United States, regardless of who the mayor is and what party they're a member of. And we really have to get past that if we're really going to be serious about addressing this societal problem. So just as I said, there's a lot of reasons for it. We're trying to, we're trying to address the reasons for it, but we're also having to deal with the consequences or the repercussions of it, which is there are people on the streets of this city that need a place to go at night. And again, we have an obligation to do something when nobody else can or will. In the city of Norman and the state of Oklahoma, cities are restricted, we're the only state like this, cities are restricted to operating on sales tax only. All other 49 states, cities can use property tax and sales tax combination to fund their local governments, to fund their police departments, their fire departments, public works, all those things. But in Oklahoma, we're the only state where cities are restricted to just sales tax, which is a very limited resource. It fluctuates up and down based on the whims of where people want to buy stuff and how they buy it. If they buy it online, if they live on Tecumseh Road, or they live on Indian Hill Road in Norman, but they go to Moore to shop, so Moore gets the sales tax. Or if people that live in Noble come to Norman to shop at the Walmart on Cedar Lane, Norman gets those sales tax. So our cities are funded entirely by sales tax, which means every single person in our city that buys anything at all is a taxpayer in our city. If you buy a stick of gum, part of that tax that you're paying is going to the city of Norman and to the state of Oklahoma. So everybody is a taxpayer here, and it's really difficult to parse that out and say whose piece of the pie belongs to who and what majority is in support of what. So as elected representatives, it's our job to parse all that out, to take all the feedback that we get, and try to make the best decision possible with the information and the resources we have. So in the end, I do support this. I heard from two Ward 7 residents that spoke at the podium tonight, both were in favor. I've heard from no Ward 7 residents that are opposed to this, so I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
I have a lot to say. So first, kind of as Councilmember Holman was alluding to, the nation, our country is experiencing a nationwide homeless problem in every major city, even in small cities. It's a real issue. We're coming out of a pandemic. Did anyone remember that? Like, did we forget that, 2020? We didn't work for 18 months, rent was on hold, and then boom, guess what? Hey, you got to pay all that back rent or get out. So what do you think happened? Yes, people are being priced out also from homes. I'm not going to say any names, but there is a person that's here tonight that I allowed to move into my house, because her only other option was homelessness, and she's a disabled person. So I was trying to prevent another homeless person from ending up on our streets, because we have no other option and no affordable housing at all. And we're a college town, so guess who gets the first housing options usually? I used to be homeless. So first, I want to apologize to all of the homeless people here and out there that walked outside so they didn't have to sit here and listen to people who have never experienced or been in that situation, talk about them. Because until you've been there, you don't know what it's like. I used to be homeless. And I'm sitting up here on this dais right now. I used to be homeless, and I went to college. I used to be homeless, and I was a drug addict. If it were not for my family support system, I wouldn't have made it out of there. I had to move out of Norman to find that support, because there was nothing here for me to help me and my two young children at the time. So I used to be homeless and understand what it's like. And if I didn't have that support system, which many of these people don't, I was fortunate to have a mom and dad. A lot of these people who are homeless probably didn't have a mom and a dad and ended up on the streets. I served people food every night along with Norman Caravans. These people who are out here working these tireless hours that aren't getting any funding right now from our city, during the day after they deliver, oh, by the way, they helped me deliver meals at night. But they're out there doing this on their own accord and helping people, because we're literally their only resources. They don't have family. They don't have any place else they can turn to. They have food and shelter, they have COC partners, and their resources are limited. They're very limited. This is grant money left over, right? Part of it. Part of it is also general fund money, which we did have some excess, and I know Anthony's not happy with using it, he wants to save it, but we're talking about human lives at the end of the day. At the end of the day, human beings. So I'm going to leave you guys with a quote, because I like to read quotes. And this comes out of a book that many of you are familiar with, or at least you pretend to be. The king will reply, "Truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." Then he will say to those on his left, "Depart from me. You who are cursed into the eternal fire, prepared for the devil and his angels; for I was hungry and you gave me nothing to eat; I was thirsty and you gave me nothing to drink; I was a stranger and you did not invite me in; I needed clothes and you did not clothe me; I was sick in prison and you did not look after me." They also will answer, "Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty, or a stranger, or needing clothes, or sick, or in prison, and did not help you?" And he will reply, "Truly I tell you, whatever you did not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me." That's all I have.
I have never been homeless. And in the past, I've helped veterans get out of the homeless business by getting them compensation, only to see them back on the streets six to eight months later. I think that as a city and as a people, this is not a political issue. This is not a conservative or liberal, not a right or left. This is a compassion issue. We don't want people to die on the streets. I don't think anybody would want that on our conscience, especially since, you know, we got word that next week's weather will be extremely cold. This has always been about taxpayer money. What's the appropriate use of taxpayer money? Now, the city does state that we do things for the general welfare of the citizens. And taxpayer money comes from me, and it comes from everyone else who either wants to have this or not want to have this. I think for the time being, we need to put that aside and look at the human side of what we're talking about. This is nothing other than reminding me, reminding all of us, that you don't have to be a veteran to be homeless. We have a lot of homeless in Norman. This will only help 40 people. So what happens to the high end? What happens to the rest that can't get into the shelter? I wish we had a million bucks, I wish we had more money to take care and look at this issue. But I think at the end of the day, we need to do what's best and what's right, not just for the taxpayers of Norman, but for the citizens of Norman. My vote tonight, because we have to take care of our brothers, you know, as a veteran in combat, we look at the person to our rights and to our left. This is how we decide, this is how we take care of each other. This is only a temporary situation. It's only for four months, is that right? Only for four months. And even though religion and government aren't usually connected, but if we say that we're Christians, I think we ought to live by that oath too as well. This is only $300,000. It's not that much. I don't think any life lost going into the winter, we want that on our conscience if we can save one life. Now, I would do like to see a program in the future, as we head out of March, I believe that most of the folks, substance abuse set aside, that they choose to have this lifestyle. Now, that's just what I see, and it's not anecdotal, and there are a lot of issues and a lot of variants, but that's a different issue for down the road when it's a warmer climate and we have time to deal with those things. So because of the human side of this, again, this is not a conservative issue, it's not a political issue, it's been made political, and we need to get away from that and look at the problem and find solutions. So I will be voting yes tonight on this, because I think it's the right thing to do for the majority and for the betterment of the city of Norman. I don't think we should allow people to freeze in the streets, and I think, you know, going into the, going into spring, I would like to see some different programs, because I pulled the job reports, there are tons of jobs out there. Now, things may change after the midterm elections, I can't predict that, but we don't know that right now. But we are able, grown adults, and we should be working. And, you know, let's look at this down the road, and for tonight, let's do the right thing. If we're Christians, like I said, it has nothing to do with government, but it's only a temporary situation, and this, there are no other entities out there right now. I mean, I would love to have everyone chip in 100 bucks to fund this through private donations, but it's just not out there. It's just, I mean, let's do it. I mean, look, if we did that, then we wouldn't... Listen, if, like, back in the day, back in the old days, I was told by my grandparents that everyone would chip in at church, and there would be community jars at restaurants, and, you know, it'd be for a specific purpose, charity. You'd drop in a dollar, or quarter, whatever you got, and that would help fund these social programs. With the economy the way it is, inflation, interest rates, there's, it's just not there. And we do have leftover ARPA money, and if there's any extra leftover, you know, I don't want to see this funded into perpetuity. Let's get people back to work at the same time. Let's find those jobs. The substance abuse, I'm familiar with it. I've got a friend who's got a son who has these issues, and he's terrified about how his son is going to live in the next six months. As a city, with the resources we have and the people we have in this room who are watching this tonight, I think we can work together to come with a solution, not to make this a totally taxpayer-funded project, but where it should always been, a community-based funded project. So that's what I have to say tonight, and I'm going to vote yes for this, because I believe as a human being, and as a veteran myself, and seeing those veterans on the street, this is the right thing to do.
So I don't know how much more I can add to what my council colleagues have already stated, but I do want to give you a little bit of an insight into kind of my thought process in this, and to dispel a few myths that we heard here tonight. I think one of the conversations about what does- I think one of the conversations about what does this do? Is there case management? Are there services that are helping wraparound services to be provided? The answer is yes. There always has been case management offered and those services offered at our warming shelter. That is something that will continue. And with the help of food and shelter, that is the work that they do every day. So I have the utmost confidence that they are going to continue offering those wraparound services to individuals that they encounter in this warming shelter. I think that it's also a fallacy and a myth to say that this will only help 40 people. That's 40 people every single night. We don't have the same people staying in our shelter every night. That number fluctuates. The people fluctuate. And so this, this warming shelter will help more than just that one single number of beds that we have located within this facility. So we have to think more broadly about this. I agree, this is, this is a documented need that we continue to talk about because nobody else is stepping up to the plate. And when Councilmember Holman talks about, you know, what is government there to do? It is to step in when the private sector, nonprofits, need help and are not kind of coming to the plate with solutions for that. So I think that, you know, while this is a temporary solution, it's not a conversation that is going away in this community. It is something that we need to continually drive forward and have conversations that couple not only with what are we doing for our unhoused, but how are we making sure that people do not fall into that in the first place? We've had lots of conversations about affordable housing, job situations, mental health, substance abuse. We have nonprofits that are doing some of that work and are part of our continuum of care. I commend the people that are putting their careers into those services. They are putting their volunteer hours into that. But to say that we are not offering, you know, solutions or, you know, this is not a handout, this is a hand up. And I think we have to remember, remember that. And so for me too, this is, this is a human story. This is a human element. And we, you know, to the gentleman who spoke about your conscience, I think that that's really key here. And, you know, voting no on this is basically providing an opportunity for members of our community to die. And that is something that I will not have on my conscience. So I'm happily voting yes for this.
... 109 West Gray Street in budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. You may cast your votes.
The contract is approved by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
We'll now take a five-minute break. Can we take a break?
...
...
All right, let's get settled back down and we'll go back to meeting, please. Let's start up again, please. Got work to do. We'll be going 23. 27, 28, 30. The 12th, Robinson, is that right? 12th, Robinson, yes, we are. It'll still be, it's a resolution. I can tell you, you've got some information about it. I didn't have to be that one. Other than, anyway. Well, it'll keep the noise.
If you said 15, it'd be two hours. So you got to stick to five and then it's 15. It's kind of like, tell my wife, we need to be on the road at five. She's on the road at 5:30. So you got to tell her four and then we make it by five. Italian time, so. Oh, yep. Saw the initial email.
Yeah, Foreman's right there. Holman is in the restroom. Okay, non-consent docket. Item number 23. Public hearing regarding a grant in the amount of $42,341 to the City of Norman, the Moore Police Department, and the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance through the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, with Norman's purchase of $27,022 to be used by the Norman Police Department for the purchase of a police staffing analytical service, forensic equipment, and advanced training, approval of a contract and budget appropriation. I'll entertain a moment, a motion to open the public hearing. Have a motion, second. Motion on the floor is to open the public meeting. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. We're just opening a public meeting.
We're opening the public hearing.
I didn't vote?
The motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Councilmember Grant is not in the chambers.
Chief Foster, would you make a presentation? Or Mr. Steege?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is John Steege. I'm the standards administrator with the Norman Police Department. I also handle grants for the Norman Police Department. Give you a little information about the JAG grant. The JAG grant is a Department of Justice grant that comes to the, that is released annually, usually in late summer. It's a formula grant. By formula grant, I mean that it's depending upon your population and your crime statistics. Set amount of money based on a formula is distributed to different states and counties, local jurisdictions or state jurisdictions. City of Norman has for well over seven years received this grant as a local distribution. We have a set amount of funding that comes to us. And if the formula applies to other jurisdictions within the same county, then we are required to share that funding with those other jurisdictions. This year's a little bit different than previous years. We have always had to share it with the county, with Cleveland County. But this year, Moore has had crime rates that, for the first time, actually qualifies them for a local distribution as well. So that amount gets factored into the total formula. And then all three agencies are required to work together to figure out how to distribute that in an equitable fashion between those agencies. So this year, we have a total of five projects. Norman has to, only one entity, by the way, can, I don't know, is my time up?
No, we don't have a time.
Only one entity can actually make applications, so we agreed that Norman, since we've done it in the past, we would continue to do it. There are five projects, three of which are Normans, one for Cleveland County and one for the city of Moore. City of Moore is going to use it to fund body, body worn cameras. They only want, I wanna say it was ten, I'd have to look, ten cameras. Cleveland County wanted three fingerprint scanners, field fingerprint scanners. And the city of Norman is getting some staffing software that connects into our calls for service software so that we can kind of plan out the heaviest usage of our staffing and the localities, as well as some forensic training for our forensic specialists, our labs, and, and then the final thing is fingerprint scanners, field fingerprint scanners for our police department as well. And so with that, I'm happy to try to address any questions.
Council members, do you have any questions? Council member?
What would be the need of a mobile fingerprint? I guess that's not, it's generally something you do when you're booking somebody, I guess, but what would be the use out in the field?
You're right. Usually that is something that's done in, you know, in a detention facility or at the police department by rolling prints, but with modern technology and wireless connectivity, we can actually check for fingerprints from out in the field digitally. One of the things to recognize with that is that the same standards apply, so a person does not, just simply because we have that technology doesn't mean we can automatically just walk up to anybody and start scanning them. It would be at the same, it could only be used under the same circumstances whereas a person is required to provide their identity. And so we can basically confirm their identity using that scanner in the field. Thank you.
Councilmember, why you got to? Councilmember Studley?
Kind of addressed a little bit of what was said about the fingerprinting people out in public. And so that's really concerning to me that you would just have the ability to take somebody's fingerprints out in public, because I know oftentimes, police ask for IDs without it being warranted to ask for their ID. So I could see them saying, well, I need your fingerprints too. And a lot of the times, people in the public are unaware of what their rights are, and that when they are and are not required to provide that information to police. And I think that that's getting, to me, a little too big brotherish to have a fingerprinting equipment that's out in the field. If you could take somebody into the facility, if you're questioning them, if you have a warrant, right, that's when you were, when you would get their fingerprints, or?
We can currently do it in the field. We just do it hard copy in the field.
But it doesn't go into a digital database, or you do take that information back and store it somewhere?
Yes, it's still submitted to SBI, or it can be.
So even if they're not the person that you're looking for, then now you've just got somebody's fingerprints that you store?
If the circumstances are right where we can make a confirming ID, then yes.
I don't know, I've just seen a lot of interesting information with stored data on people who weren't necessarily in trouble that gets used in the future for things. And so it just, this is a little troubling, but like you said, you guys already do it. You just do it in a different manner, so maybe this technology would help you find a criminal quicker. I'm hoping that's the end result and not just...
It can also confirm that they're not a person we're looking for as well.
Agreed, but then you've got somebody's private information that you shouldn't have without a warrant. Anyways. And then, can you, how much is this grant again?
The total grant amount is forty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-one.
Okay. And you said you write the grants for all of Norman Police?
Yes.
Do you know about how many grants you guys get a year? How much in grants?
I think we got, have five grants right now, including this one. How much it is?
Like annually, do you know how much money you get for Norman Police Department in grants?
I don't, around a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand.
A year?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was more than that, just of some of them that I know we've approved. Like this one is roughly fifty, and then I think we just approved. Oh.
The number on this is twenty-seven thousand and twenty-two dollars that goes to Norman. Forty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-one is the three entities.
Okay. Okay, that was all I had. Thank you.
Now, are there any persons from the public that want?
Sorry, I'm always a late, late push. One, one, more question. So we write one grant for three entities, Norman PD, Moore PD, and then the county. So we did then distribute that money? So the forty-two thousand is given to the city, and then you distribute out the other two grants to Moore and then to the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So they don't have an ability to approve this contract?
Correct.
So it is all on us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Evan Dunn. I live at fourteen hundred Garfield Avenue. And I want to speak in...
Evan, Evan, we, on this one, we have people signed up on this one?
Right.
And you're not.
I...
You signed up for miscellaneous, I think.
I signed up for everything.
I only have two names on, on item twenty-six.
This is item twenty-three.
We're looking.
Twenty-three.
Oh, you did, didn't you? Okay. All right, Evan. Go for it.
I appreciate the comments and the concerns, but I support this. And Officer Steggy, I want to volunteer my grant writing skills to you because I think we need a police department managed garden. A big community garden that's run by the police. Thank you.
Cindy, oh. Mary, did you sign up for this?
I signed up on every one of them. But I didn't realize it was supposed to be a approve or disapprove option. I don't understand why we would have to either approve or disapprove before we knew if there were any amendments to the, to the deal.
There are none, ma'am.
Okay, I mean, no, there are not any this time. But as a general principle, there could be some amendments that would change my mind. So I would appreciate you reconsidering the, the requirement to approve or disapprove. Anyway, yes, I, I'm, sorry, I'm Mary Francis, Word seven. And, and I am a person of privilege, since I'm white, and I'm also a woman, which is a position of privilege in certain circumstances. And I do have some of the concerns that Councilmember Studley just expressed about taking information that might be used inappropriately, as far as I was concerned. However, I also know several IT people, and almost every one of them who have a deeper understanding of internet technology will tell you, there is no privacy. You don't have any privacy. They have my fingerprints. Well, they have my fingerprints, yeah, they do, because I've met with the police a few times. However, they also have all my emails. Sometimes they even opened up people's letters. That, you know, there's no privacy. At the local level, yeah, there's, you very rarely run into any of that. But at any rate, I, I am in favor of this, of this proposition. This, and I suggest that you approve it. I hope you will.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, let's get in the right order now. It's Cindy first. You're not, Steve?
Yeah, to sort of start this as a point of order, if I read the materials in the binder correctly, you have to open this to everybody who wants to talk. That's the nature of the public hearing required by the, the actual documents that you posted under the procedure. I signed up anyway because I had a couple of things to say about it. First of all, yay for cameras for Moore. I had a chance to look at some body camera footage the other day. It was pretty eye-opening, so I think it's important for people to have the ability to get to it. The forensic science training, I had a question that hopefully Mr. Steggy will be able to answer. There's sort of a replication crisis going on in forensic science right now. The underpinnings of, of hair analysis and bullet analysis and a lot of those kinds of things are actually sort of being questioned. So I, I wonder what the nature of the training that NPD is gonna be getting on this. I wonder if there'll be replacements in things, or is it the same old thing? Who's doing the training? What will it be about? The second thing I was wondering about the analytic software. I recognize that, that there are staffing problems at NPD, and they seem to be not necessarily sort of budget or money related. They seem to be related to the number of people who want to be officers. So I do think it's important to use all the resources we have to staff in a very smart way. But I was wondering sort of what the algorithm being computed by that, that, the analytic software would be. If it's matching usage patterns to staffing policy, that probably makes some good sense, but that also seems to be one of those things that's really over-constrained by, you know, for example, the Fraternal Order of Police contract. There's just only so much that you can do. So I wonder if anybody's done any analysis of how much that's likely to help us, given the other constraints that we face. And then finally, I had some questions that were not unlike Councilmember Studley's on field fingerprinting. And just in particular, what are the conditions under which an officer either currently or in the future can stop someone, ask them for their fingerprints, demand that they give their fingerprints? Why does it help to be able to do that more rapidly? And how rapid is it? How, if, if, if I get arrested someplace and get fingerprinted, how long is it gonna take for you to determine where I'm, whether I'm the real subject or not? Because, I mean, I do think that the sort of catch and release kind of thing that was discussed in the, in the policy probably isn't a bad policy for most of the kind of things that we're talking about. So just questions, hopefully we can get answers to, to see whether or not this actually makes good fiscal sense.
Okay, I've got it. A Andrew Von Dell or Von Dell, I don't know how to pronounce it.
Yeah, I was wanting to discuss a miscellaneous, I wasn't so sure about this issue.
Okay.
So...
I couldn't tell, because you had shit.
Yeah, I don't think I signed up for this one.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
All right. Any further comments from council? Councilmember Studley?
I think she hit me.
No, Studley.
I hit mine, but I think you hit yours first, and I didn't hit. I don't care. I just wanted to say that I know I ask a lot of tough questions, and I know you think that I don't like you, but I do, and I appreciate what you do. And I know that there is a need for policing, I get it. Like, we have actual crime that happens, and we need to be able to solve it. I just ask these questions because, like I said, there are statistical data nationwide where people are using this kind of stored data unjustly. And so I just wanna make sure that our police department doesn't do that. And I also want to say that I really appreciate your ability to write grants for our community and for our department, and to be able to get some of this technology-driven data, if you will, or informational things that can provide data to us. So thank you for all the work that you do. I know it, it is oftentimes a thankless job, and, and you are greatly appreciated. So thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close this hearing. Oh. Now did you put on?
I did.
Yay. Councilmember Schuler, again.
I, my question was more just a point of order on public hearing. So do, are we required during the public hearing to, to see if anybody in the chamber also wants to make a comment? Or are we allowed to force them to sign up? We are able to set, I apologize. We are able to set the manner in which a public hearing is held, and those who are minimums are supposed to do that. So it should, it should be. I mean, I'd like to see in the future that public hearings are open, not only to sign up, but for members of the community within this room to be able to speak on said item. Maybe I thought about that clear. You know, I also just wanna say, you do, from our police department and the grant writing, that brings these types of money into our city to, you know, buy essential critical needs for our department. So, you know, thank you.
Any other motions? All right. And entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Council members, may cast your votes.
The motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is closed.
Are there any final comments from council? I need a motion to approve a contract and budget appropriation.
Please, do. Just one thing caught my attention about this was if Moore's crime stats had not reached this, whatever threshold is, would we be? Would it just be the city and the county getting the forty-two thousand?
It would have probably been a different figure because we wouldn't have included Moore's crime statistics and population statistics.
So the grant is more because they're involved now? I was trying to make sure that, like, if crime is going up in Moore, then I don't want them to take a piece of our pie necessarily, but to help contribute to that grant.
Just coming off the top of my head, I think our grant last year was around thirty-two thousand. So we increased about ten thousand, and I assume that's because of Moore's.
That was the total last year?
The total last year, not just our part.
Cleveland County to split, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that clarified. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to, to accept the grant and contract.
So moved.
Motion on the floor is to accept the grant and contract. Council members, you may vote.
The contract and grant were approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-four, a preliminary plat for lots two, three, and six. Block one, a replat of lots two, three, block one for Jennings Estates, number one addition, generally located at the southeast corner of West Main Street and Twenty-Fourth Avenue West. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject. Is there a second? Are there any comments from council regarding this? Want to hear from here? Let me, yeah.
Okay. Alec Bass, Wallace Design Collective, representing the applicant, just standing up to say this, a preliminary plat application to create a new commercial lot along the Main Street frontage there in that existing shopping center at the southeast corner of Main and Twenty-Fourth.
As I understand, that'll be east of Panera Bread, south of Main?
It'll be west of Panera, east of the Little Caesars. So in that, they've got a oversized parking lot out there. There's plenty of parking to spare. This will allow them to... them to market this to more diverse clientele for somebody to actually be able to purchase the land, build a new business there, and they'll still have plenty of parking for the entire center. No one showed up to predevelopment from the public. Green Belt Commission, Planning Commission approved unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Peacock?
I just want to commend you on your use of reclaiming a wasted parking lot. That means a lot to me.
Councilmember Holman?
Looks like a drive-through type setup, or is it... Is that just a...
Part of... Right. Part of the preliminary plat application is we have to provide a preliminary site plan. That is one potential user that would be well-suited for the size of this lot. However, they do not have anybody under contract at this time.
Okay. Would a... Maybe for staff, would a drive-through as opposed to a strip mall, would that... I know we have issues with drive-throughs. Would that require them to come back here for anything, or... I don't know.
Anything that goes in there will meet the ordinance of the city. If any other additional approvals are required, we'll come back at that time for...
Just the type of traffic that a drive-through could generate or whatnot could be different. So I just was kind of looking for some clarity on that maybe, but I agree. I do like the idea of using an empty parking lot, basically. And we've been seeing that a lot around Norman in the last few years, too, so... But yeah, the drive-through does, I guess, present a potential thing. So I don't know if our Public Works Director might have a comment about it.
Thank you. Mayor, Council Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works, said we're just conferencing over here, and we realize that this would have to come back for a final plat before it could be recorded. This is a preliminary plat application. I don't know that the site... If the site plan did not change significantly from what you're seeing here, we probably wouldn't bring that back with any concerns. But you're right, a drive-through restaurant with a large, you know, double drive, that sort of thing might warrant some additional review, and we'd be happy to bring that back during the final plat process.
Thank you very much, Sean.
You bet.
That is the only questions I have.
Councilmember Studley?
I just want to concur the sentiment of Councilmember Peacock and just say thank you for being conscious of our environment and using a space that's not being used and already has asphalt on it and not using up any more green space. So thank you for making use of that empty lot.
I was watching this, though. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, so one of the... One of the questions that we talked about when I was at... So this is in Ward 2, and I was at the predevelopment meeting, and we discussed about this design. So there... The one thing that I think hasn't been addressed is that drive-through, like ATM that's on that site right there. And I think we had talked about that being still located there. Is that correct?
As of right now, that drive-through ATM is there by lease agreement. I do not know what the terms are to terminate that lease agreement or for it to remain in place concurrent with whatever else goes in there.
Yeah, so that would be something that would be addressed on final plat or a new site plan? I'm looking at staff.
Be part of our building permit application and site plan review.
Generally not. Councilmember Schuler, it's a private matter between the property owner and the tenant of that unit versus the tenant of the new space. So typically, that wouldn't be a matter that the city would address. Again, if the site plan were significantly different than the one you're seeing here, we would want to bring that back, and it would also be... Become part of the building permit process, and have a full review for that as well.
Okay, so as it stands right now, that ATM drive-through is on the site, and so if that were to remain, that's not a substantial difference. It's obviously keeping the status quo of what's there. But if that were to change, that might bring that back to us.
Right. The ATM could relocate to another spot on this parcel. It could go somewhere else. All those things would be subject to those same regulations. I don't think an ATM sighting is typically a zoning matter in most cases. If it fits a zoning application, it's a building permit application, and they just install it.
Okay. Yeah. One of the other things that I wanted to address, too, is that with changing the plat of this, we're not creating a new curb cut. We're not, you know, any of those things. It will still be, you know, accessed by, you know, that kind of drive-in area that's right west of Panera. So we're not, you know, increasing any kind of inflow traffic onto Main Street from this location. Like, all of those things are staying the same.
Correct. The intent is to use existing points of access, especially with the median out there on Main.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ma'am Clark, are there any... Anybody in the public?
I've got Evan.
Okay. Evan's up.
Hi, everybody. Evan Dunn, Ward 7. I would just like to kind of add to the ecological value by suggesting that we incentivize that further to not just have somebody move in, but to pay them, I don't know, something, some rate. We've got to come up with some way of shifting our culture into being more ecologically conscious. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Ellis?
So I just want to say that I signed up to discuss this one in part because it wasn't at all clear, just from reading the title on the agenda that came out on Friday, what was going on. So I needed to sign up so I could get on, but I didn't know exactly what it was about. Having read it, I learned a little bit about it. I'm glad to see that we're going to be putting in a sewer there. It seems that we're replacing one bit of asphalt with another. I was surprised to learn, and I did learn that that's actually a plating issue. So good for that, I guess. Sounds like a good idea to me, but it would be easier, and there would be fewer people signing up for stuff, if you would release the supporting items for the agenda at the same time you give them to council.
I think that's all.
That's all?
Yes.
Are you coming up? Please do.
Mary, did you... I'm sorry. I keep... I can't read it. I'm sorry.
I'm always being overlooked.
I've got to get used to looking through the other sheet.
Mary Francis in Ward 7, still live there. At one time, and I don't remember how many years ago it was, we discussed plating and replating. Can someone tell me when this plat was originally approved? And I bet you Mr. O'Leary knows that. 68, 1968. Wow. A lot of things changed between then and now. And then the discussion was that in order to replat, you needed to come back with more information, the fees again. Replating is... Has been a bone of contention at one point in this city. I think it was probably in the 80s, maybe 90s, when we had a pretty extensive discussion about how one went about that, getting renewal of the plat. So you might want to consider that at some point. Thank you.
Is that all the speakers who have signed up? Any final comments from council? Does it work? Okay. Would you like to speak?
I'm sorry. It's all right. You know our buttons. It's a struggle. So I just want to, as the, you know, Ward 2 rep, and I've been watching this kind of move through the process from predevelopment planning and to now, and as other council members have kind of alluded to before this, that it's good to see, you know, unused parking lots being turned into something that will come forward with, you know, sales tax and re-envisioning of what that property looks like. And I'm sure many of you have been into that parking lot, and it is expansive. So I think that this is a great use in reconsidering what this space might look like on Main Street. So, thank you.
All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Preliminary plat was approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item 25, an ordinance to grant special use for school in the R1 Single Family Dwelling District located at 2323 Classon Boulevard. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant here to make a presentation?
Evening. My name's Jason Andes. I'm in 2, and this property's in Ward 7. We got special... What do you call it? Backup?
Special use, sir?
Special usage, but at the time, we were at St. John's for 50 years. And that relationship, although it was great, it was a struggle, and it was stifling to try to continue moving forward. And so we found this property and elected to move over there. And at the time, we weren't able to determine where we wanted to put buildings, playgrounds, equipment, driveways, that type of thing. We've been there for two years. It's been great, but we need to expand as we intended. We're currently on a two-year waiting list for kids, and this will allow us to add those additional admin and facilities in there and take care of those families that are here in Norman.
You're a Montessori school student?
We're a Montessori school. That's correct.
I'm just keeping it in mind.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Hi, guys. My name is Kaylee James. I'm a teacher at Classon Montessori School. I just wanted to... Jason has all the specs and all the official documents. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a personal view. We've been at our location in Classon for two years now. We moved there in the middle of COVID, so moving to a new place in the middle of a pandemic was fun. But we love our location. It's incredibly beautiful. It has room for us to grow, but right now, we are tripping over each other in the building that we have. My classroom is not big enough for the 17, six-to-nine-year-olds that occupy it right now every day. Montessori is a special kind of education that is driven by the child. So they get to choose what they're working on. They get to choose where in the classroom they work. They get to choose whether they're sitting at a table, or working on a mat in the floor, or working outside at a picnic table, which means that these kids are moving and choosing spaces all day long. So space is a really big limit for them. They have access to all the materials they need to learn each day, or they're supposed to. And right now, I'm having to make decisions about what lessons can go on which shelves because we don't have room to have all the shelves. So I don't have room to put out the materials that they need for the lessons they deserve to have. And it's impacting them, and it's impacting teachers, but most importantly, it's impacting their ability to learn. So approving this would give us the opportunity to add a second building for our lower... For our elementary and our newly-added secondary school, which, as Jason said, we have a two-year waitlist. We have the kids. We just don't have the space. So I urge you to approve it so that we could expand our space and serve even more students. Thank you.
Any comments from council regarding... Councilmember? Councilmember Holman?
I do have a couple of questions.
Sir, you might want to answer the questions.
Oh, we're coming up here. Yes. This is in Ward 7. I'm very familiar with the site and the use. And just a couple of questions. One is, it looks like the whole driveway is going to be replaced. Is that what I understand?
Eventually, that's the idea. Right now, that's our drop-off and pickup lane. We'd like to actually expand that. So our current curb cut, we don't intend to change that. We want to continue that, but we want to build additional driveway to be able to take care of ambulatory care, fire if need be, but additional car and drop-off.
The sidewalk along Lois Street right there, on the north side of your property, there is a sidewalk. It's not in the newest shape, but it's in okay shape. At your driveway, it does not have ADA ramps on either side. Is that something that would be part of your project?
Could be. Yep. Once we go through permitting and address those things, that would be items that we'd have to...
We do a lot of those in the city, of course, but there are a lot of instances where on private property, or not even on private property, but if a drive is replaced, sometimes the approach is on the sidewalk also. And I think that would definitely be valuable. And if not, it's something I would definitely want us to look at, staff and city, to fund that pretty small project, I would think, to get the ramps on each side of there. So is... With the increase in... Got a waiting lists. You're wanting to expand, add, to be able to accept more of those students. Are there... And I have not. No neighbors have contacted me about any issues, but traffic, pickup, and drop-off is an issue at a lot of our schools in Norman, public and private. And in some cases, it's a pretty serious problem in the neighborhoods. Have those been any issues that you've experienced so far or anticipate?
Not so far. The building sits far enough off the road, and our driveway does allow for full circular motion around the building, and having a staged drop-off and pickup, it's worked out quite well.
Perfect. Okay. All right. That's the only questions I have for now. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right. Got three people signed up to do. Thank you, sir. Three people. Evan?
I love Montessori schools. I think we need to give them whatever they need within range.
Steve?
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. I just wanted to say that our daughters were Girl Scouts that were worked out of that church, and that it's a great site plan for the actual physical setting. It's going to work really well because they've got things placed where they need to be, and they left a big old hunk of yard for kids to play in, which I think is a fantastic idea. So, love this one.
It's your turn, Mary.
I love it, too. Thank you.
All right. Any final other comments? None? Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance in the second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion passes by a vote of eight to one... Eight to zero. Councilmember Studley's not in chambers right now.
Excellent. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Have a motion in second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Adopted unanimously. No, I'm sorry. Eight to zero. Councilmember Studley is not in chambers.
Excellent. All right. Item 20... Yeah. Item 26, an ordinance adopting and ratifying the assessment role for the University of North Park Business Improvement District, establishing the time and terms of payment of the assessments and other expenses, fixing penalties to be charged for delinquent payment... For delinquent payment of the assessment or an installment thereof, setting forth the tracts or parcels of land against which the assessments are being... being adopted, ratified and levied, directing the city clerk to prepare, sign, attest and record with the county clerk of Cleveland County the following passage of the payment deadline, a claim of lien for any unpaid amount due and assessed against a tract or parcel of land. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Recognize Beth McCalla to make a presentation?
Actually, there's not really a presentation, but I can give a bit of background. This bid was created July 8, 2014 by Resolution 1415-11. All of you are probably pretty familiar with the improvements that were envisioned and executed, Legacy Park, Legacy Trail, several areas of landscaping and entrance enhancements. It was phased to encourage and allow substantial additional development to occur over the years, and this is its 10th and final assessment year. So this will proceed through fiscal year '23.
Thank you, ma'am. This is not, are there any members of council?
I've got the same three.
Let's let council go.
Oh, sorry, council.
Nothing from council. Let's go ahead. Evan. Evan, come on up.
Hi. Evan Dunn, Ward seven. The issue that I have is that we're fixing penalties, and we're charging them for delinquent payment, et cetera. What I would like to see are incentives in place for the businesses and the individuals who are reducing our dependence on petroleum and electricity for making things look pretty. I can't say it any more simply. It's just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Steve Ellis, Ward four. I actually signed up for this one very much on purpose, because I was around when this bid district was originally passed, and it was actually sort of part of what I considered to be a really terrible deal with the University of North Park. If you remember the way this bid was structured, it, the first year, there was basically no assessment. All the funding came out of UNP TIF funds, and then there was a gradual shift, ending this year, towards the first year that the actual businesses in the area are funding these proposals. And I think it's a cautionary tale in certain kinds of ways, but maybe a sort of good tale in others, right? So bids can be used to subsidize, depending upon the structure of the bid. This was a clear case where there was a huge city subsidy to this business improvement district. So bids don't necessarily relieve the city of anything. They can be a big subsidy. But the one thing that this bid did get right is at least it weaned the subsidy off, right? And one of the things that I think is really interesting about the structuring of bids that we're going to have to walk going further is just to make sure that they don't turn out to be ways for subsections of the city to be able to demand more tax dollars than they're getting right now. This bid was actually structured that way, and it's finally weaned off that. The businesses are paying for their own proposal. I don't think anybody has any problem with a group of private businesses getting together in order to beautify the place that they're at. And it's probably not even a big ask for the city to sort of, you know, hold the money and be the person who sort of brokers and distributes the money. But when the bid comes with a larger price tag than the city was going to spend on that area to begin with, it's just a fancy name for, let's give you some extra money. So I think we need to be careful about that. So for the first time in 10 years, I think that this bid assessment makes sense, because the bid's actually paying its own weight this time. But we shouldn't have done it before. We shouldn't do any more bids where the city is picking up the tab for private industry in the future. Thanks.
There any comments from council?
Oh, wait. We're not through. Cynthia? Okay. And Mary? Okay.
He said it just right.
Okay.
Did your button work? Would you like to speak?
I would.
Oh, God. I didn't know. Sorry. No, you're fine. Thank you, Ellen. So I think that
there's a lot to say right now on situations around business improvement districts and how they are formed, how they come about, what the assessment looks like, what it doesn't. And I know that at the beginning of the meeting, you heard that our proposed downtown bid was withdrawn. So I would encourage the community, as items like this, a business improvement district, come forward in the future, that, you know, there's more engagement in that process. There's more learning. There is more attention to when council is having study sessions on said items. When we're learning, you're learning, and Ken. So, you know, let's, let's move in the direction of, you know, being participatory, because I think the only way that we, as a council and as a community, continue to move forward is if there is discussion around these items, positive, negative. That's the only way that we get feedback. But, you know, what happens, too, in the space is a lot of misinformation. And so, you know, I think laying focus that we've had a business improvement district in Norman for the last 10 years is an important distinction, something that I think many people were not aware of, and I personally was not aware of until I stepped on council. So I think it's important for us to continue this conversation into the future, and what areas like this could be of benefit to our community in the future. So, just an overall statement.
All right. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance in the second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Thank you. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
The ordinance was adopted on final reading unanimously.
Item 27 was withdrawn. Item 28 is withdrawn. Item 29 is moot. Item 30, Resolution directing staff to terminate the purchase and sale of agreement contract for $2 million, $400 regarding, or, excuse me, relating to real property located at 1210 West Robinson Street, pursuant to its terms. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the resolution. I have a motion in second. Would you like to comment?
This is a housekeeping item. Having been informed of the results of city staff's due diligence on this contract on 1210 Robinson, it's our understanding that, based on the conditions as understood by council and the impact that could jeopardize the current budget for this project, it's our understanding that council wished to give staff direction on that. So this is that opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from council? Councilmember Studley?
I just want to reiterate the fact that we did our due diligence as a city, as we talked about on the hearing. Whenever we voted to approve this, we weren't approving to go ahead and just move in and make this a affordable housing facility. What we were approving was the ability to direct staff to go ahead and do their due diligence and inspect this property, which we did. And so I hope that members of the public see this and understand that we listened, we made a promise that we wouldn't go outside the budget constraints, and we're not. And so because of some of the things that they found, it would definitely put us way over budget, and we're still looking at properties such as the motel that's for sale. So we're not giving up hope. We are still looking. We know that affordable housing is a large priority in our community. And so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that just because we're passing on this, it's purely because of the cost to renovate and not the lack of wanting to provide affordable housing. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman?
Just to sort of reiterate what Councilmember Studley said, I, when I saw that we were going to terminate this, I was vehemently against it. And so we got more information about the issues with it. It would not be in the best interest of the city to move forward with this building. So I am okay with terminating this. And I just want to clarify with Beth, a yes vote is to terminate.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any members of the public that are trying to speak?
Not sure all of them are here, but...
John Skamahorn?
He's not here.
Okay. Steve Ellis? He's here. Oh.
Oh, he is? Yeah, all the way in the back.
Go ahead, and then he can come next.
Like Councilmember Foreman, I was a little surprised to see this on the dais, or on the agenda. And I was also surprised to see that there wasn't any discussion of the reason why this wasn't a suitable, affordable housing place. So do share, please. Tell us what happened. I heard that the budget, it blew out the budget, but I didn't hear anything about why it blew out the budget. Was one of the things that we expected? Was it something that was unexpected? Is this the sort of thing that we can look forward to when we look at the hotel that we were looking at purchasing before? So what exactly happened? There's nothing in the, in the agenda items that says why this is not a suitable place. And it looks weird to just have this on, I mean, that was Councilmember Foreman's point. It looks weird to have it just like, oh, yeah, we're going to yank this off, without any explanation of what happened. So I would love to hear that story. Thank you.
How about John? Did he come back in?
He did not.
Oh. Okay. How about Cindy?
Hi again. Cindy Rogers, Ward four, still in my seat back there. So I was also surprised. I guess I had some of the same questions as my partner, but I do think this speaks to the nature of the problem, and that is, you know, sometimes you're hopeful if you want it to work out. I'm really glad about due diligence, because we want to stretch our dollars as much as we can. But I think opportunities to find an existing building to use are going to be rare, which suggests that, I don't know how things are going with the hotel, but it suggests that, you know, if it is okay, that might be something we would want to try to move on quickly, or maybe work with our community partners about, you know, finding some land and building affordably from the ground up. So I don't want, what I'm hoping is that this isn't just, well, we tried, and I know some of you, and I know the heart of some of you, that that's not the case. I don't want this to be a roadblock of actually making some meaningful, creating some meaningful opportunities for folks to actually transition from homelessness or not transition to homelessness. So please, let's just keep looking for solutions. We have smart people in the community, and I think we can find a solution if we just really keep pushing. Thank you.
Is Rachel Wyatt Swanson still here?
No.
Evan? Pardon?
They asked a question.
Oh, okay. Mike Davidson? Jacob Greer?
Lauren's not here. Jade's not here.
Okay. Russell's gone.
No, Russell.
Okay. All right.
All right. Any final comment?
Yeah. Oh, and Mary. I never know when you're going to get up.
I understand that, my Mary Frances is still in Ward seven. I understand that, that you had also, the council had also been looking at a hotel out by the West Library in that area. I've been out there. I picked up one of the homeless men out there and drove him to an appointment of some sort. I don't remember. That's a long ways for the caravans or anybody. I know there's a bus stop out there, but Lord have mercy, have you ridden a bus? Can you get anywhere on these buses? It's really difficult to get where you want to go through the bus system here, not because they don't try, and because it's, but because it's just not expansive enough. It doesn't have enough routes. It doesn't have the little short connecting route. And so that, that's one reason why I'm really interested in the transportation plans, and particularly rail, for example, and light rail within the city. We discussed that back in the, actually, again, back in the 90s. And I commend the city on taking a look at the budget. That's really important, too. But that, please don't put people who are at risk so far away from the center of the city where they could benefit from some of the, of the options the city provides. And I, but otherwise, I, I think that canceling this is probably a good idea if the budget doesn't, doesn't really hold up on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Studley?
Evan, are you not getting up?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
At your point, the affordable housing piece, I think that we need it all over our city, not just in Center City. We focus so much on Center City because of the resources that are here. But something that we found in our community planning and transportation presentation was that a lot of the people on the east side are actually taking the bus to the west side to work. So I think it would be a great opportunity for us to provide affordable housing on the west side. That way, people don't necessarily have to take the bus to go to work and the grocery store and things like that. So, or it would be minimal, instead of having to go from the east side to the west side. So I, I agree that we do need more affordable housing, but I love the fact that it's going to be spread out throughout the community. Another thing that I wanted to address is that I will not ever stop fighting for affordable housing in our community. I promise you that. And something else that I really want to make sure that we all understand is, we did not have any information about this prior to today. None of us on council. And I'm not okay with that at all. I think that our study sessions being canceled are not okay. I think that that's the opportunity for council, for council who didn't attend committee meetings, to learn about items. It's our opportunity to discuss items that our city manager is going to put on the agenda, or that you even want to put on the agenda, or that our city's attorney wants to put off the, on the agenda. And so I think that not allowing study sessions for us is a disservice to not only council, but also our entire community, and I'm not okay with it. So if in the future, when these items are presented, if we can have some type of leeway, so that way we know how to answer our constituents, and we can be better educated instead of the moment before the meeting starts, that's not acceptable. And if we start having to rule of three this, I think that's ridiculous. So I'm asking you, as a councilperson, to please, Mayor and City Manager, start giving us leeway, start giving us education, start providing us the information... us leeway, start giving us education, start providing us the information. We need it, and our citizens deserve that.
Councilmember Gray?
Just to address the public comments about affordable housing and being creative and finding solutions, again, on October 19th, from 6:30 to 9, we'll have that Affordable Housing Town Hall, which is a perfect opportunity for the folks who email us, because I do read the emails, to bring some of those ideas that they've talked about and talk to a panel of experts and see what the feasibility on some of these ideas are. And that's it.
Councilmember Shu?
Thank you. I want to reassert the talking points that both of my council colleagues just stated before me. Affordable housing is one of the most critical items that continues to come forward, and it is something that I personally want to see continue to move forward. This item today and how, you know, what happens with the termination of this contract is not an assessment or an assertion that these things do not matter, that we will not continue to search for solutions, that we are continuing to try to find land to build on. We are trying to find other properties to renovate. This is an ongoing conversation that our community is in critical need of. This is also coupled with previous items that we talked about this morning, or this, earlier this morning, it feels like it was this morning, talked about earlier in this meeting about, you know, homelessness and how do we prevent people from falling into that gap? And that is something that affordable housing could help with. And so for me, that is something that will continue to be one of my priorities that I continue to push forward. And to speak on the issue of not having information before tonight, it is something that I talked to the city manager about this morning when we had a meeting. I also, you know, addressed and raised some of these concerns about, you know, what are the next steps in our contracts with, you know, other facilities that we're looking at? And so continue to push us to see these items forward, and I will do that from this side as well.
Councilmember Foreman?
I like to be talking about stuff that we're not supposed to. So Dr. Ellis, just to answer your question, so I don't have to make a video about it later. The building was dilapidated, and there were a lot more structural issues than would have been worth it to us. So just to answer your question, just so you know, for transparency.
Councilmember?
I just want to go on record saying, let's talk more about light. I said, let's talk more about light rail and Norman.
To adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The resolution was adopted unanimously.
All right. Thank you. All right. Miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Due to the Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate, excuse me, to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Do you have any?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Okay. I'm seeing the ones that aren't here. Steve?
I really wanted to, like, talk during miscellaneous here about this sort of theme of information provision, because it really does seem from this evening that at least the agenda setters tonight were more interested in the illusion of openness than really of openness. So, you know, if the supporting items for the agenda are able to be made available to council members before the weekend, they should be made available to citizens as well. Some of us try to keep up with this kind of stuff. And it's a little bit difficult when there are 912 pages of supporting documents and first get them on the Monday before a Tuesday meeting. I think that also goes for things like reading the consent item and such things. I'm also really surprised just that we're so eager to sort of take control over comments on items as well. So, you know, the discussion that I started on item 23, you know, it wasn't, I can read this stuff, you know, the staff report on item number 23 says, "Recommendation one, that a public hearing be conducted where each person in attendance receives a copy of the agenda and attachments and is eligible to speak about the topic as required by the grant." I don't think we technically fulfilled that requirement tonight. So let's hope they don't get the tape, right? The grantor, or we'll have to go do this again. I also think that if you're going to hold a public hearing, you should probably say something during the public hearing in response to the questions that people had. There were questions from the dais, questions from the audience, and we just closed it up and went ahead and voted rather than answering any of those questions. That's just the illusion of openness. There was really no public hearing here tonight. And the sort of final issue, I think, on that is, it does look very strange when an item comes out on a very contentious issue like item 30. And given the contentious issue and the possibility of, you know, log-rolling and a variety of other possibilities, if there's no supporting documents that say what's going on, you've got to be suspicious if you're a citizen in Norman. Now, I understand, I don't need to be suspicious now, I learned tonight, thank you, everybody, for filling me in. But, you know, when you get it the day before and it looks like something's going south that you hadn't expected to go south, it would be nice to sort of be able to get the answers without even necessarily attending and asking questions. But especially if you're going to attend and ask questions, you should be responded to. So I think we need to get rid of the illusion of openness and act.
Darla LeBlanc, Ward five. Mayor Heckler, at the Patriot Party last Friday, you spoke of battles you were preparing to fight. You compared yourself to Moses, you said, and I quote, "This is the beginning of an offensive." You speak loudly and freely of battling your own constituents, but I would like to remind you that we are more alike than we are different. We are all Normanites, and I guarantee that we could sit down and find more commonalities and differences with every person in this room and this city. I was born at Norman Regional Hospital. I was the drum major of the Norman High School Band. I just celebrated 20 years of marriage with my high school sweetheart and our three kids at ten Norman Public Schools. So my roots in this town are very deep. A state entity is trying to sever those roots. The illegal southeast extension turnpike is going straight through my living room. When I learned on February 22nd of the turnpike expansion, I could hardly think of anything else for days, literally. I didn't get a full night's sleep for months. I've gone through all the stages of grief. I felt like I was drowning in a tornado all alone. You know, the first night that I got a decent night of sleep after the turnpike was March 3rd, the night of the town hall at Crosspoint Church, where thousands of people came in opposition with questions, and I learned that I was not alone. Then there was the March 29th city council meeting, the study session with OTA and many of you seated here. I've watched the recording of that session multiple times, and it's given me some small peace to know that my city is standing for me and fighting for my family, my children, and my neighbors. So thank you, councilors, for asking the hard questions to the Turnpike Authority, most of which Joa Kelly could not answer. So Mayor Heckler, I'm not, I'm not angry at you. I don't want you to think that, but it is not at all obvious where your heart is with the turnpike. On May 25th, you did sign the No More Tollroads pledge, and I thank you for that, but since then, you have given very mixed signals about where you stand. I'm in no way convinced that you stand with the people of the town, the hundreds of families that stand to lose everything, and the rest of the town that will have an endangered water supply, lose business revenue along I-35, and the entire city will lose its distinct urban and rural mix that is one of the best things about Norman. And maybe it's just because you think that there's not a lot you can do as mayor, but I'd like to remind you that you are a leader, and your actions and your, what you say as a leader matters, and matters to your constituents. Being a leader is not supposed to be easy. You spoke a lot of brave words about battling your own constituents. I implore you to take that same energy and to stand with your town, stand with your city council, and boldly and clearly oppose the OTA and their unauthorized and therefore illegal turnpike.
Linda Evans.
I'm Ward four. But I'm here to talk about the turnpikes, and I care very passionately about this issue. And so I have something prepared. I'm not, I can't do it extemporaneously unless you want to hear some bad things along with the good. So let me just open this up just a second. If it will open. I've been looking at this all night, getting ready for this. And I'm not getting it open. All right. So I guess I really want to speak about the fact that we've been fighting this for a long time. OTA is trying to take turnpikes and run them right through our homes and our places of nature and peace. They are threatening our water supply from the Aquifer and also from Lake Thunderbird and Little River Tributary. They threaten the flood plain on the west side of town and the 10 Mile Flats area with maybe further flooding. There's always massive flooding out there. Daughter lives out there on 48th. I would also say, but for the people on Indian Hills Road, I've met a lot of them. If any of you have driven that way, you've seen their signs. They've attended a lot of our meetings, the Supreme Court hearing, the Senate hearing, a lot of them. And, and some of them, you know, everybody feels very passionately about this. And of course, Darla, a friend of mine, Debbie, who has since become a friend of mine, many other people in our group, and No More Turnpikes, Oklahoma. Got a wonderful group working with us called Pikeoff OTA, and they're the legal branch who are fighting this with us, and they have done some, made some great inroads. And so I'm dismayed because I thought, and we'd been assured, that the council was going to fight with us. I'm not sure that every member was, but my understanding was that the most of you were going to be fighting alongside us. So I was really dismayed when I heard that you might have changed your minds, and you might have reversed your decision, and you might have gone back on your word, and that you won't be helping us anymore. And I hope that's not true. I pray for you to stand with us. It'll change completely the character of our bucolic rural areas and our access to the lake and the character of Norman. I know you, I know we're wanting maybe some more developed. Okay, so, all right. Well, I'm done then. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I appreciate the opportunity. These things are going. Sonia Potts, Ward three. So we're going in a totally different, different direction right now because I'm here to talk about the land application of biosolids. I would like to read an email that was sent to four members of the city and the Norman Utility Authority Leadership Team by my husband, Kevin Potts, on April the 26th, 2022. These statements are excerpts from the original email so that I can read it in my three minutes. Ellen has some packets for you. You should have the original email, and it's almost identical to this. Last week, and this is coming from my husband, and it happened six months ago, last week I was contacted by Steve Hardeman about trying to get the contract between the Potts family and the NUA updated so that the NUA would have more land on which to apply biosolids. I am a city employee. The NUA has not applied biosolids to any land that I have an interest in since 2018 and has only been using land owned by Andrew Potts. This land lies 1.3 miles due south of the wastewater reclamation facility on Jenkins Avenue. Attached is a city attorney inner office memo dated June 6, 2018, which you have, in which the conclusion, as can be seen on page 10, was, "As Kevin Potts is not a city council member and not a trustee of the authority, there is no conflict of interest. Continuing the contract with the Potts family would be beneficial for the authority due to the anticipated expenditures for disposal that can be avoided." In addition, in 2018, my family hired an attorney to research the possible conflict of interest, as we had not heard back from the city attorney. Attached is his email that was sent to the city attorney's office over four years ago on August 21st, 2018. That also concludes that this issue is not in violation of the city charter. You have a copy of that also. "It is my family's desire to get the contract updated since John Potts died in October of 2016, and the ownership of the land has changed so that the land application of the biosolids can once again be applied to property that I have an interest in, which would be beneficial to both parties as the method of disposal is seen by many as the most economical and most environmentally friendly. As stated in the attached City of Norman Office memorandum, the use of Potts land for application of sewage sludge is considered a beneficial reuse of wastewater and is the most cost-effective means to dispose of our sludge."
I'm Kevin Potts, Ward three. I'm here today to inform those of you who may not be aware of the status of the contract for the land application of biosolids that has been in place for decades between the Potts family and the NUA. A letter was sent August 11th, 2022, to advise the NUA that our family would be terminating the contract in December 9th, 2022. Due to the failure to get the contract updated with the new, with the new landowners since ownership changed when my father, John Potts, passed away over six years ago. The partnership has been beneficial to both the NUA and the Potts family. It is documented by a city attorney memorandum about, from four years ago, that states that continuing the wastewater sludge contract with the Potts family costs a tenth of disposing of the waste what it would cost if the authority used the commercial side. The benefit for our family is that the biosolids are a good source of fertilizer for our hay fields. It is our not, it is not our desire to have to terminate the contract, but we have tried since 2016 through emails, phone calls, submissions with city and NUA staff to get the contract updated to no avail. We had hoped that the contract would get updated since there doesn't not appear to be a conflict of interest because I am a city employee. The deterioration of the land that the biosolids are currently getting applied to is a main concern we are having to terminate the contract. If the biosolids were being applied to all the lands available at our farm, as has been done for decades, deterioration would not be an issue. We wanted to bring this to you as overseers of the city and the NUA, just to make you aware of the termination and the reasons that brought it about. If you determine that you would like to continue the land application of our land that is 1.3 miles due south the water reclamation facility on Jenkins, we'd be willing to rescind our termination letter. Furthermore, as far as approximate savings per year to the NUA, it runs from as low as 300. as $300,000 noted in the Attorney's Office memorandum to as high as $750,000 a year. The average, approximate savings averaged over the five-year period equals $2,650,000. That's a considerable savings that our family can offer to the NUA and the city of Norman on a long-term basis. Thank you, Council.
Mike Davidson, is he here? Andrew Von Dell, or Von Dell?
Yeah, my comments are going to be in addition to Tana Fitzpatrick will be coming up to about an issue with a construction site near the, actually Andrew Von Dell, Ward 4. A construction site next to a childcare facility that our children go to, Primrose of Norman. What we've noticed is a number, I'm here to present a number of studies about site pollution that happens, one being from the EPA that was published on December 16, 2021. It outlines that air quality often outside of these sites can be sometimes worse than what's inside, usually caused by air fil, and air filtration in things like schools and childcare facilities are usually not upgraded on a regular basis. And we, according to this study, it almost never happens. So even if there are outdoor pollutants, there's really no way of preventing it from getting inside. And of course, it's not monitored outside where children play during outside time as well. There was another study that is going to be cited that, that was done by Portland State University in December of 2020. It's called the Neighborhood Air Quality Impact From Construction Site Emissions in Portland. Can, these are both can be found online. What they found was the most common problem was cleanup, site cleanup is something that happens, you know, not nearly as much as it should, which can go into groundwater and can also, if it's wet, which is another one that's called, often a moisture-related type of pollutant, where things that are wet don't really have much pollution, but as they evaporate, it creates more pollution after the site's been left off, left and finished. Updated construction safety meetings is another thing as far as they've found rarely if ever happens, especially when it comes to pollutants. And again, this, this facility is, it's a huge hospital being built right next to Primrose Montessori. It's at least a six-story structure, I believe. It's pretty big. It's doing a lot of things like carpet installation and spraying on of fire retardants and work on concrete, steel, and these things are all happening out in the open, and the wind, which happens quite a bit, is carrying them right towards the childcare facility where our children go. There's also a, I guess, another facility for healthcare just on the other side of it, so I don't know how much they've really noticed as well because their people do go outside. But I just wanted to get those two on record so that we know that those studies have taken place as something people have put hard science behind. Thank you.
Long night, we're getting close. Cindy Rogers, Ward 4, still that seat back there. So a lot of things I have to say, but, but one thing, I'm often very critical, but I wanted to make a comment that for all the complaints and pushing I have to get more information from the city of Norman, let me tell you about the county. Okay, so you guys, if, I really wish the county would step up to the plate and post agendas and not have to know something happened to find out about it. So honestly, I feel like you guys get an A, and I'm a hard grader, so kudos to you on that. But even though I'm giving you an A, I think we can still do better. And even the appearance of having like state-of-the-city addresses that aren't really made in a public forum, just as bad form. It's just not how you engage your citizens. So I really hope that, Mayor Haikila, that, that you do give a state of the city, that's an open access, and you invite the whole, let's have a big party, invite everybody. I think that would go a long way to getting dialogue going. I believe, I forget who said it this evening, we do have more in common than we have differences. And if we build on our commonalities, I mean, nobody wants to see people dying in the street of homelessness. So let's find ways that we can work together. I think it's problematic when council members don't have information because then they have to tell me when I pester them that they don't know. So, you know, sorry for the pestering. And the turnpike. Homelessness is a big problem, but the turnpike will change Norman forever, and there'll be no going back. My father-in-law lives in a property in Oklahoma City bordering Edmund, and the Kilpatrick Turnpike goes in his backyard. I mean, I don't know how far away it is, but there's a gully and there's a bunch of trees, and it's horrible. You can't be out in the yard without zhu, zhu, zhu traffic. If you go to our park, our new park, Ruby Grant Park, and you're by Highway 35, you can't enjoy that area. So I'm for Darla, I think her name was, let's fight this. There are things the city can do. A united front will go a long way because we'll never get our Norman back if that happens to us. Thank you.
Just quick, just quickly, because I know it's getting late. Mark Wagner, Ward 5. Some of the things you mentioned, I'd like to go back to the OTA. You talked about acreage, and you talk about providing low-cost housing, and we talk about why and how expensive it is for housing, and OTA wants to come through and take a whole bunch of acreage, and that's acreage that can't be used for anything else like housing. And it's also 441 more families looking for housing, hopefully in Norman, but maybe having to go somewhere else. So again, OTA, the turnpike will change life for all of us in Norman, not just those of us on the east side. And I encourage everyone, again, to stand together and do whatever we can to try and get the turnpike averted from Norman. Thank you.
Kurt Fanning, I don't think he's here. Abbott?
Hi, I'm Edward. Got my own stopwatch. So I'm a wannabe. I want to be you, I want to be up there on that dais. I'm a wannabe musician, I'm a wannabe writer, I'm a wannabe revolutionary. But I know that I am an American, and one of my favorite movies from my childhood is The Hunt for Red October. And in it, there's a scene where the sub that they're chasing, the Russians have developed some new technology for making their subs run more quietly than the sensitive radar could pick up. And technician comes in, he was a lover of music, and he recorded this sound that he heard just before the sub went quiet. And he heard it again and again, and he recorded it again and again. And he looked at his charts, and he looked at the places that he heard it. And he played this tape for the sub captain, and he played it in real time, and then he played it in 10 times time. And it was obvious, it was the clearest thing, that it had to have come from something that was designed by a human mind. And his decision-making was changed in a moment. He went from being suspicious and skeptical to being a convert, just like that. I hope that as information is presented, I hope that we'll do the same thing. When something makes sense, and it's verified, and it's justified, I hope that we'll change our course, just like that. Thank you.
I'm here to give the prequel to Andrew Von Dell's comments earlier, maybe they'll make more sense. Not that he didn't do a good job. I would like the council to consider regulating construction sites on properties that abut daycare centers or schools for the purpose of reducing or eliminating air pollutants that pose health risks to vulnerable populations. We have a child currently attending Primrose School of Norman. Primrose primarily serves infants to kindergarteners. The school abuts the construction at the Norman Regional Health Plex, and there are small parking lots touched, I mean, it's right there. Our youngest child has attended this school since March. His older sibling also was attending, but she's now in public school. We moved here from out of state, and it was the only school we could find on short notice without a waitlist that could take both of our children. We did not know about the construction beforehand. Shortly after my kids starting, started at school, we saw lots, lots, lots of dust dispersing into the air at times. You probably saw it from the highway. Once the project finished breaking ground, the dust appeared to reduce significantly from my eyes, I could tell. So I felt better, but I recently learned that construction sites can still emit lots of particulate matter throughout the life of the project. I became concerned again about my child, the other children, and the workers at Primrose because, of course, they take the children outdoors to play at Primrose's onsite playground. We spoke to the Primrose director who said that she noticed the plumes of dust earlier this year, and that when they noticed that, they brought the kids indoors. But they did that on their own regard. It wasn't that some person from the construction site let them know that that's something they should consider and that the air quality might be poor. I am concerned the air quality may continue to be poor, and I would like to see the children better protected while they're at school during the day. Primrose is not the only facility in that area with a vulnerable population. Directly on the other side of Primrose is a skilled nursing facility, so it's on the other side of the construction from Primrose. I want to emphasize that I am glad we are adding on to the Health Plex, and I support prioritizing healthcare facilities in this area and in the state of Oklahoma. Many of the students at Primrose are children of the Health, Health Plex workers. I simply want our children to be protected as much as possible for the duration of the project. I ask council to consider the following. Amend the code to require air quality monitoring of construction projects that are within a certain range from a daycare facility. Amend the code to require construction companies to give notice to daycare facilities when air quality might be poor, such as during concrete mixing or installing installation, insulation. Personally, I believe the best approach would be to require the cost of major construction projects to include paying for the temporary move of children and staff at daycares or schools near the project for the duration of the project. Thank you so much for your time.
What's your name?
Mary Salzman. Is it Mary Francis? There's lots of Marys.
Go, Mary, and you'll be next, Debbie. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, okay. Yeah, that's why they always call me Mary Francis. There's a lot of Marys. I'm Mary Francis, and I'm in Ward 7. And some of you may have noticed that I haven't been here very much this year, mostly because of the second hip replacement, which had some complications. And so I'm all healed up now and getting ready for my knee operation next week. So I won't be here very much in the next month or so. So, but I do have some history with being at city council and serving on the committee for what we used to call the Enforcement Committee, which oversaw city elections. Now they call it the Election Commission. I spent six years on that commission back in the 80s and four years under Cindy Rosenthal. So I have a little bit of background with the city, and I have some background with Potts Dairy Farm. Back in the 60s, back in the 60s, when I was in college here in the fine arts community, I would go out to Potts Dairy Farm. And if there was nobody there to sell me their gallon of milk, then I just took the gallon of milk and I put my money in the little can. They never worried about that. I love that about Norman, love that about Norman. And like they said, Norman is going to be changed. It has changed some, but often for the better, but it's not going to be changed for the better if the OTA has their way. I live in Norman. I'm, my property is not out there. It's going, going to be affected, but the city will be affected. And I hope that the council will discuss getting together a proposal and a, and more involved. The other thing is, I really appreciate those people who speak up because if you just drag that microphone a little closer, it'd be a lot easier for some of the old people in the audience. I know there are some old people around here. It'd be a lot easier for them to hear.
I've lived in Norman for 46 years and in Ward 5 for 30 years. Mayor, I've heard you say more than once that you believe it is very important for the citizens to trust city government. If you want citizens to trust city government, then it starts with you to be worthy of that trust. Giving an address about the state of the city without inviting the citizens of that city does not promote trust. It is my city too, and I don't want to dole out $30 to be privy to the state of my city, even if I was aware that the address was being given, which I wasn't. The city's website says, "Building an inclusive community." Calling out council persons in this address and calling for the need for more conservative council persons is not the path to building an inclusive community. Like it or not, a big part of Norman is not conservative. It is quite likely that these non-conservative council persons are representing their wards, as is their task. You asked for this job, and so I ask that you step up to the plate and represent all of Norman, as is your task. It is your responsibility to get along with non-conservative wards, non-conservative council persons, and non-conservative citizens without speaking out of both sides of your mouth. I thought city government was supposed to be nonpartisan. I imagine you believe you are elected to develop Norman, but it's not what I want, and there's many others who don't want it either. The biggest ward in Norman is Ward 5. Currently, Ward 5 is under attack by the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority and pro-developers, of which you are one. I'm pretty sure that there is not one person in Ward 5 that I'm pretty sure that there is not one person in Ward 5 that is in favor of this provoked, proposed road from hell, the turnpike. We're fighting it as best we can, and you should be celebrating with us the victories that we have had. But in this address, you appear to rally around the folks that are not impacted by the turnpike, although I don't know what water you think they're going to be drinking. So if you want to build an inclusive community and want citizens to trust in city government, this is not the path. Thank you.[1775.66][1775.66](applause)
Anything further from counsel? We have any, we don't have any further?
Uh-uh. We're adjourned.